All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask Stacy for roll call.
Councilmember Budge.
Here I am.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent at this time, but will be joining us later this evening. Vice Mayor Terry.
Here.
Mayor Gatewood.
Here. Stacy, can you please read the video recording and play back schedule?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned in webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, November 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, November 22nd at 6:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Daryl, can I have you do the pledge allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this moment, we're gonna have a moment of silence in honor of Veterans Day. Everyone bow your heads. Thank you very much. All right. All right, he's not even here. This is awesome. All right, 5.1. I'm gonna go ahead and recognize a very amazing member of my council group. It looks like it is Mr. David Sanders' birthday on November 25th, so we're gonna go ahead and sing him "Happy Birthday", so if everyone can unmute themselves. This is gonna be rough like last time. It was really scary, actually. All right.
I gotta hit record here. Let me hit record.
All right, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna vocalize. Do, re, mi. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Member Sander. Happy birthday to you. Yay, all right.
Thank you very much. That was very charming, very heartfelt. Thank you.
All right, whew, that was rough. All right, citizens wishing, sorry. Public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so via teleconference or by submitting a speaker card to... If you want to make public comment via teleconference, please press the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press the star nine hand button. For those participating by Zoom or by telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, the speaker will be called upon by the mayor at that point in the agenda, so if it's something to do with something we're bringing up, please wait till that item is brought up. Under provision of California State Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any agenda item not demonstrated to be of emergency nature or a need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Stacy, are there any public comment?
Yes, I have received four public speaker cards so far, and the first speaker is Angel Ball. FISA Mughal is following Angel, or they're coming up as I see together. Following them will be Mark Berry and then Helen Wayland-Bashaw. And each speaker has up to three minutes to present.
All right, guys, go ahead.
Canit, a neighborhood litter abatement project, project overview. Throughout our work with Keep California Beautiful's pilot data mapping project documenting the litter found in our neighborhoods, we have come to identify patterns and behaviors that contribute to the high trash accumulation in our analysis areas. As community-based groups, our approach to litter abatement has been organized cleanup efforts where a small group of people become responsible for picking up and disposing of trash left behind by others, which appears most pronounced around poorly maintained commercial properties and underserved residential areas with a concentration of multifamily complexes.
Project goals. Our first goal. Bypass regular property maintenance and the ineffectuality of code enforcement to resolve persistent issues by installing trash receptacles in public rights-of-way, providing convenient opportunities for residents to dispose of litter and contribute to the quality of their neighborhoods. The second goal. Aside from supporting resident action, identify other factors contributing to the litter issues in our communities and promote their resolution through a combination of infrastructure improvements and city outreach to property owners.
Project specifications. Six trash receptacles to be purchased by the city, which shall be strategically placed in both of the Keep California Beautiful Analysts zones, two in Lincoln Village, and the remainder allocated in the Cordova Vineyards neighborhood for a period of time no less than one year. Making it happen, the city would purchase and install commercial-grade receptacles from a vendor of their choice in the model of their choice with an eye for aesthetics to provide beautification and support community buy-in. Further, the city would be responsible for ensuring the receptacles are placed within the public right-of-way or negotiate placement on private grounds nearest the public right-of-way, and see that the receptacles are maintained on a routine basis, either through contract with a waste provider or in agreement with the affected property owners.
Project milestones. The first milestone will be a pre-assessment. The first of a series of four litter analysis events occurred in early October in the Cordova Vineyards and Lincoln Village neighborhoods. The volume and category of litter found in these areas prior to our pilot program's implementation, i.e. the existing conditions, have been recorded into the program app. Our second milestone will be a post-assessment. The Keep California Beautiful data recorded during the cleanups subsequent to the installation of our public receptacles will allow us to isolate and measure the impact of this program on our neighborhood's litter abatement efforts.
In Cordova Vineyards and Lincoln Village, our project typically focuses on creating a sense of belonging, fostering community pride, and showcasing our welcoming neighbors, neighborhoods. When we identify a need, we like to advocate for a solution that adds to our quality of life, and we are dreaming big together.
Your three minutes is up.
And providing ideas that will improve the feel of our community. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, we are happy to take your questions, but first, we have one for you. Are you willing to support this resident-led canit proposal?
Garrett.
Yeah?
So, the city already has a very handsome model of public trash cans, and they're installed, I see them on Folsom Boulevard, so maybe the ladies could work with Public Works to spread them throughout more areas of the city.
Okay. Excellent. Did you guys, would pickup day be on the normal trash days? You thinking like a Thursday like that? Or is it something you feel like needs to happen more than once a week?
We would have to assess that, and then again, whatever works out best with your contractor, whatever partner you go with.
Okay.
We have to see whatever it is that Public Works is doing currently, because I never see them overflowing.
Right, right, you don't want them to overflow.
We were hoping against the existing model like we see on Folsom Boulevard. We find them a little bit homely. We wanted something a little bit more fun and attractive so that we can inspire people to actually use them. These are hotspots, sort of, and having a canit loan isn't gonna be enough. We want to make them attractive.
Okay.
It might make sense, again, working with Stacy Delaney and the Community Enhancement Grants. I know we've done, I think we did, a commission for bike racks, and we had artists design some bike racks. I know Sacramento did it, we used some of those. So it might even be worth commissioning some designs that could then be voted on by our Arts Commissioner or somebody like that. So, it's definitely a worthwhile idea. I would say, I would say that bringing something like this to a council public comment process is probably not the place to get the councils' buy-in, because we really need the staff's research first before they can make a recommendation to us. But I'm totally...
Past experience of things kind of dying on desks, going that route, so we were hoping to reach you first and then follow up later.
So, at this point?
Yeah, I would ask that if you're feeling like things are dying on people's desks, those are things I'd like to see emails about. Because unless you tell me, I don't know that. But I don't get a lot of complaints that things are happening like that, FISA, so if that is, I'd be very appreciative of you letting me know.
Cool.
So...
We have done something like this on West Paloma. It may not be the trash can you prefer, but that was deployed for exactly the reasons you just laid out and pretty much exactly the scenario you just laid out. And I'd like to hear back from staff at some point, but I think it's been successful in that location, along with some other beautification that happened at the same time.
Yes.
So it sounds like you got interest. Measure H, measure R, let's see what we can do. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next.
The next speaker is Mark Berry.
Hey, Mark.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. Oops, looks like my clock started, so I'll get rolling here. Hello. Talking about some clearing and grading on the Cassis property, and I think some of you are aware of the issue. It's damaged access to recorded public easements. It's damaged city drainage easements, and it's degrading the property prior to promised opportunity for public comment. The Cassis property is actually zoned residential mixed-use, not agriculture, and according to the city code, clearing of more than one acre or grading more than four inches deep requires a permit for that clearing, grading, and erosion control. So, among the stated reasons of this chapter was to minimize damage to surrounding properties, protect public rights-of-way, minimize damage degradation of the water quality, and minimize disruption of the city authorized drainage flows. So my concern, among others, is that this hiking and drainage easements, the drainage easement going to the American River, and the surrounding property includes the American River, which is a wild and scenically designated river. This area is also statewide, designated by the state as a high priority groundwater basin. So I guess I'm here today because I believe I've already contacted the city on April 7th, April 14th, April 28th, May 13th, October 15th, and November 13th. And I know many of my neighbors have, but the clearing and grading of the property seems to continue. And one of the big concerns is that SEQUA guidelines provide that the baseline for environmental review for a property will be the existing property conditions at the time of environmental study. There's been environmental studies in November 2007, and that environmental study is part of the MND for the Folsom Boulevard Specific Plan. Says, you know, the city's not gonna be building in a floodplain so that doesn't get evaluated. Also, it does recommend what's supposed to be done prior to any disturbance of the property down there. There's also a January 20th, January 2020 Medrone Study that identifies several potential species of concern. This both the Trumark developer and the Cassis presumably have. You know, there's even, among the many species listed, is a bald eagle, which with Rancho Cordova's history of honoring veterans, I'm hoping that's important to our community. There's also an October 2020 study, and that talks about the historic indigenous growth of Northern California black walnuts in the Sacramento region. It's listing one of the five isolated regions known to contain this natural grove. This is in the study that the owner and the developer also have. And this study indicates that these trees are susceptible to disturbance, the older trees even more so, and that with this further stress...
Your three minutes is up.
Further stress from drought would be a problem. So, our concern really is, oh, we request that there be cease and desisting of the grading and clearing of the Cassis property not be done without some sort of regulation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Well, thank you, Mark, for my intro. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Helen Wayland-Bashaw. I live over in the Tierra Grande area. My complaint too, and I've brought it up to Cyrus, and everything that goes right and wrong with the city is a direct reflection of your city manager. I too have been involved with numerous complaints about grading and horses. Over a year ago, Cyrus, she said we were going to look at catch sacks. That never happened. And what I'm bringing up is, last week, I received a phone call from two of your members of your staff. And in particular, they mentioned that the grading would be addressed. Well, they also said that certain things haven't taken place. So when you, as a manager, tell us that you're gonna look into it, and I'm gonna now be putting in a bunch of information requests, as I've told people before, when I meet with your staff, I normally give a document over. I've never gotten any of my documents back, so therefore, you're not complying with the freedom of information. So I will be requesting information on the easements, because I have solar panels, and aside from the fires, all the grading and stuff that the Cassis property has done has diminished the effectiveness of my solar panels to generate electricity, because they're full of dust. And we have some other people putting in solar panels. So you, as a city manager, are responsible for the city itself, not the individual homeowner whose parents gave away the easements, and not for an out-of-town builder who wants to build in against what some of the own city policies are, the federal laws, but our state regulations are higher burden to make, and they haven't made them. You know, so again, I will be requesting various information, and I'm gonna compare it to what I wasn't given before, because San Jose spent a lot of money on failure to provide information. Thank you for the time.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak under public comment? Yes. And if there's anyone via Zoom or by telephone that would like to raise their hand, I will reach out to you next. You'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Lupe Treviso-Adonis. I come from a different point of view in reference to the Cassis area that our residents are referring to. My interest and my curiosity is, has the city done any connection with anthropologists, archaeologists that would be able to either identify, preserve, and zone any area that has indigenous burial grounds, artifacts, or anything as such? A lot of our native people, I am native, and I'm here to represent them. I'm Tiwa Del Sur from Isleta, Texas, but I'm in California now. A lot of us have been replanted. My ancestors treasured their artifacts, and when anything is disturbed, it needs to be done in a very conscientious way, with individuals that are either trained or know how to preserve these items. Has any of that been done? I'm asking because a lot of our native people lived in those areas, the banks of the rivers, on both sides, down the ways. Mido has already been disturbed. The Mido people in Placer County and also in El Dorado County and Sacramento County. We have a lot of folks that were displaced because they wanted to flood certain areas. How is any of this being preserved for future generations? Thank you.
That's all the public comment that I have for those in the council chambers. Is there anyone via Zoom or telephone that would like to raise their hand for general public comment?
All right.
Seeing no hands, I'll turn it back over to Mayor Gatewood.
Let's go on to council reports. David Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items to report. The NLC meeting started this morning, well, Lisa did for me. I'm a board member. We had a spectacular, actually, TIS meeting today. That's the Transportation Policy Committee of NLC. I was chairing it, but at the same time I was chairing it, the president was signing the infrastructure bill, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, or the catchy name now is IIJA. I suspect that's only Beltway catchy, but in any case, that was being signed during our policy committee meeting on transportation. So we actually sort of cut to it live in part of our meeting and went back. But there are going to be a lot of new opportunities coming forward, both for the region and for the city as a direct result of that legislation. So we need to sort of keep our eye on the ball with regard to funding streams that are available. The bill is giant. There's a lot of pieces to it, and we'll need to expend some effort to be sure we're taking advantage of everything we can there. And I think our DC team will probably be, not only the League of Cities, but also our lobbyists will be pretty helpful there. I spoke to leadership for Rancho Cordova last Friday, and it's a smaller group than normal, I think probably due to COVID, but a spirited one. I talked to them for about three hours, I think, in total, about growing strong neighborhoods. None of them left, and all of them felt like, when they left, that they needed to go home and clean up their front yard. So that might have had some sort of effect on them. I did that with Loriann Olm, and I chair a day, I guess you would say. She leads them for a neighborhood walk, a business walk in this case. We met at Mill Station, the upper level, and interestingly, no one who was in that group had ever been there before. So it was sort of a surprise to all of them that it was there. Several of them had been to an art show or an art event downstairs, but not upstairs. So it was nice to introduce them to that part of the community. The Heartstopper's Haunted House ended, actually, I think before our last meeting, but I'm not here to report numbers about it, but I can tell you, because I don't know if those are absolute yet, but I can tell you it was a record-setting year. And that haunted house, which, if you look at what it actually is, it's not just an attraction in our community. It involves a bunch of kids, largely, who volunteer as actors and get to dress up and prepare this space for a haunt. They get to act as actors in the haunt. There's a storyline and a theme to the four different parts of that haunt. There is a partnership between the Cordova Community Council and a nonprofit that puts this event on, and a share of the profits goes to the community council, a share of the profits goes to operate the nonprofit. But we think, looking at this, that there is even more opportunity in the future for growth of that activity. So we are, we're excited about the future of that and in figuring out exactly how to best take advantage of it. Next year, you might, for example, see the addition of escape rooms to the layout. But there is no haunted house in the region that is of that caliber. It is really, it's an artistic marvel, really, it's really something we can be proud of. The RCIA held our retreat last week, and we had a ton of attendance from our leagues, a lot of interest and excitement about coming back from post-COVID, trying to push the leagues back to where they all were, sort of uniformly. All had seen a bit of a dip in attendance and participation, but frankly, not as bad as we were seeing nationwide. So we're beating the norms that are out there, but there's still a lot of opportunity for growth. So we talked about a marketing plan and a serious strategic planning exercise that probably would take about the next year to accomplish for finding those avenues of cooperation for the entire league. And we had a, it was a lengthy retreat, but some really healthy discussions, in particular between the agencies that provide facilities and the organizations, the local nonprofits, that are actually making these opportunities possible for kids. Those discussions seem particularly ripe right now as there is more and more demand for facility, and our groups don't always feel like they're getting the best shake with regard to the options from those providers, from the landlords. So basically, that's something about the park district and the school district. They pretty much control all of the athletic fields in the region. So we've got more work to do there. We are doing work and have been for a while, but it was sort of a cathartic moment, I think. I attended Regional SAN, Secog, and a couple of other meetings last week. I'm not gonna note anything in particular from those, but I will note that the State of the City occurred within the past time period, and congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on a job well done. There were many, many varied expectations on how you might pull off the State of the City, and I have to say, I think you exceeded all of them. So congratulations on that. It was a great event. Thanks to the city staff who participated and the Cordova Community Council, who's the host for that event. And that is my report.
All right, Linda.
Thank you, Garrett, and thanks, David. I have not had a chance to, I was not able to attend the State of the City, and I will watch it, and I'm looking forward to it. I do have a question for David. I was watching the press conference today or the signing ceremony today. I didn't hear the phrase "IIJA", and I don't know what it stands for.
Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act. IIJA, I think that's the title under which it passed. All the lobbyists and staff members at NLC, that just rolls right off the tongue, but I don't think it's gonna hit a mass market anytime soon.
I don't think it's a phrase that rolls off the tongue.
It's gonna be the Transportation Bill or the Infrastructure Act or something.
For sure. So, Garrett, thank you for the moment of silence for Veterans Day. I know I'm not alone in missing our twice-yearly celebrations for Veterans Day and for Memorial Day, and I heard from other people who found it as calm and sort of uneventful as I did, which is really too bad. So we'll look forward to a new year. We did, however, as council and staff, have a really interesting meeting with the Veterans Administration over at the hospital to learn all about their plans, what they have been doing, all of the various facilities that they have put in place for our veterans over the last almost 10 years now. I mean, it's pretty obvious that everything is growing and expanding over there, and they have additional plans, and it was great to learn about those. But what I would really like to shamelessly brag about is that Charlie Budge has passed his Eagle Challenge as Boy Scout, and on Sunday afternoon, we did his Eagle Court of Honor. His mom and his family worked really hard to pull this together along with his Troop 363, which is a meeting out of the Grange for something like 59 years. And I bring this up specifically because our colleague, Ken Cooley, as a city council member, was always doing resolutions and celebrations for the local Boy Scouts as they pass their Eagle Award. And so as an assembly member, he did the same thing for Charlie and came down with a certificate and a very special handmade Eagle scarf with his name on it. And I've never been to an Eagle Court of Honor before, and it was really very, very moving and very, just a really nice way to highlight this wonderful achievement, which I know for boys continues with them as grown men and really is something that sets Eagle Scouts apart from... sets Eagle Scouts apart from a lot of other, a lot of other gentlemen. So congratulations to Charlie. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you. Donald.
Can't make me follow grandma saying congratulations to the grandkids.
It's better than you yelling at yours.
Well, that's true. Why he's got his, his football mouthpiece laying on, on the ground. It's gross. Yeah, I was going to mention about the VA meeting. I thought that was really productive. After years of them, you know, being here, me being on the council, we had never really had a formal sit-down with them. So I thought that was really productive. I learned a lot. Sorry I couldn't stay for the tour, but I only had an hour and took an hour just for the meeting. So hopefully, those that stayed for the, for the tour learned some more stuff. I have a lot to report. I know we had an HR personnel meeting today for the Air District as we begin negotiations with our union for a new contract for the upcoming budget cycle. And nothing related to report there, except that we had a meeting. The other, the other thing I would just share is last Thursday, actually, on Veterans Day, we still have the Children's Museum Board meeting, and I was appointed the, the new board president of the Children's Museum. So starting, I guess, last week, I'm now the board president of the Sacramento Children's Museum, and we're going to be in the process this year of growing the board and hopefully getting some more people with fundraising experience in the organization and hopefully look to grow in the organization. They're preparing for the day when, when they're expecting to see more field trips coming to the museum. They're utilizing that additional space that we allowed them to move into that used to be the McKesson area. And I think it's, it's a really exciting time with, you know, more and more children being able to get vaccinated. Hopefully, we're going to put this entire pandemic in a rear-view mirror and get back to some sense of normalcy. I was reminded by staff that the average attendee, child attendee to the Children's Museum is three years old. So we still have a ways to go before we're going to see that population getting to herd immunity. But I, I think it's going to be, hopefully, a very good year, even looking at the new powerhouse Science Museum, which is really, from what I've been told, you at least got to be, be able to read to really enjoy that museum, because a lot of it requires you to read about the different exhibits and things like that. So even with the, you know, the opening of this new, you know, multimillion-dollar facility downtown, I still think there's, there's a huge demand for our Children's Museum. And so, yeah, looking forward to doing more work, and thank staff and everybody else who ensured that organization survived the last 20 months. I can tell you that there was a point where we laid everyone off and closed the doors and wondered if it was ever going to open again. And, you know, happy to, to report that it's still there, it's still functioning, and it's welcoming children again. That's it for me.
Congratulations and condolences. That's great, though.
I will say, I've been president-elect for like nine months, so I kind of knew this was coming.
You knew it was coming.
Yeah, this wasn't a surprise, so.
And colleagues, we should probably mention the flags on Folsom Boulevard as part of our Veterans Day celebration, as it were. Cordova Community Council puts those up. It's hundreds of flags over miles and miles of Folsom Boulevard. It's quite a stunning view. I drive it every time we do that. And I can tell you, community council staff drive it multiple times a day to be sure all the flags are still up and functioning. So it takes quite a bit of effort on their part, but it is visually, visually spectacular. So congratulations to them for that.
Just you bringing that up, I would also say that I've noticed, or I had noticed in the last few months, how weathered our street flags in general, the Ranch Cordova street flags on like Sunrise Boulevard have gotten. And to whoever was involved with that, the new ones look great. So kudos. And if, if we didn't learn, the blue ones held up a lot better than the other colors. I don't know. So the, the ones that said All American Cities looked almost brand-new comparatively to the, some of the other ones that faded that had purples and some other colors. So it's amazing which ones really stood the weathering over others, but the new stuff looks really great.
All right, I see we're joined by Siri. Siri, council report.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will start off by saying that I attended your presentation, the State of the City, and I think you did a great job, Mr. Mayor. Your theme, Big Dreams Becoming Realities Here, Becoming a Reality Here in Rancher Cordova, was a big hit. I think it was really appreciated by everyone here in the city. And you gave me the opportunity to give out my first proclamation here to the, recognizing the Hindu Heritage Month and Diwali, the Festival of Lights, which is a festival that we Hindus have, which recognizes that every time you have to do the right over wrong and where light wins over evil, which is something I follow every day. What else? Yes, the Veterans Day. I actually attended the America's Homeless Veterans, which is that nonprofit organization of veterans helping veterans. They had a barbecue, and I can, I went over there, they're Arm on Drive. Went over there and heard about some vets' stories about their time when they were serving. You know, it was, it was pretty good to hear, hear them how, right now, they're homeless and they're looking forward to housing. But they all had such a positive attitude, so it was, it was good to hear. And also, a lot of them that I did talk to had gotten their COVID shots, so that helped. And I did walk across the road and got a picture with the flags. You know, I actually had to wait like maybe 50, 30 seconds or something for all the flags to be waving. I got really good pictures. So great job that Cordova Community Council. I mean, as usual, this was beautiful of Folsom Boulevard. Let's see. The other thing was the Good Neighbor Day. So there's the theme that, that Loriane is putting together with Good Neighbor Day events, where we have the, last one was at Cordova Meadows Elementary School, where they kind of put together like, it's, it's great lunch, barbecue for neighbors to meet each other. They have COVID testing, COVID shots. That was a beautiful day, but those who are interested, please come out of the next event. It will be in all newsletters and social media. And last, but not the least, well, two things. One, I also attended the welcome reception for the Workforce Development Program that was held here in the city hall by DP Global. They were teaching the students about Amazon Web Services, and I think it was a pretty good turnout, and all the students there were pretty excited to get started. I think it got started last Monday. And along the theme of technology, the robotics competition has been announced in lieu of the City Community Enhancement Fund. There is a program that will include a series of workshops. There is a Train the Trainer. This is a competition for middle schoolers that recite in Rancher Cordova. Free kids. We're hoping to have a, at least five to eight kids per team, and about 10 to 15 teams compete for prize money. So all you kids in Rancher Cordova, no, all you parents in Rancher Cordova, please get your kids to get into these workshops, get into this robotics competition. You know, kids learn a lot when they team up with each other and build creative stuff. And remember, these competitions from these school levels, these kind of competitions are really valuable for college applications. So go for it. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Siri, can I ask, is that, is that instead of the esports?
No.
Okay, that's something else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This one. Thanks.
On top of.
There you go. All right, thank you, Siri. Mayor Report. It was an amazing talk with the VA. I think they're going to do a lot of stuff in the city. Still a lot more big dreams. We talked to Boris about one of my old council members, Bob McGarvey's dream about a Ronald McDonald House and what it would take to actually put one of those in the city. And so that was actually an interesting discussion. Donald and I kind of jumped at it as an opportunity, and it's just something that's going to take some time, but I do see a future for us having a Ronald McDonald House. It also was interesting to talk to them about emergencies.
Fisher House.
Fisher House, Fisher House, I'm sorry. Fisher House, that gets money from the Ronald McDonald, that. But yes, they're very excited. And then the also, the what our VA actually does. It's amazing to hear that if, if you are in life-threatening issue, the ambulance will actually take you to the VA hospital, who will then see you. So that's, I was always wondering, like, what level would they take? And so they'll actually, if someone is in critical condition and a heart attack or something like that, they will be whisked to the VA before they're put someplace else. So we do have a actual functioning emergency hospital in the city of Rancher Cordova. Happy Veterans Day to all the vets out there, especially you, Dad, I know you're watching, and all the other members of my family that are in the Armed Forces. Was awesome seeing the workforce development and all the groups. A lot of them are starting to reach out to the community members in the region to try to help people get jobs, and I'm looking forward to hearing the success of bringing people into the computer era and what we can do to educate those. And that's all I have. Cyrus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Just wanted to point out that we have piloted the program. It's part of our Business Assistance Program. We have contracted with an architectural firm to provide design services, you know, for those projects that are fairly small, but navigating the California Building Code can be very complex. And so we have brought an, an architectural firm to work with those businesses. We provide that service free of charge to our, to our businesses, small businesses, and we hope to see some success stories. So far, it's been very well-received, and, and we hope to expand it once we understand how the program works. The only other thing I wanted to add was during our visit to the VA, I, we also had an opportunity to have a follow-up discussion with Dr. Stockwell and his staff and talked about the water tower that has been built. It should be noted that this water tower is on federal facility, so it's not subject to the city zoning or permitting requirements, but they have committed that on all of their future projects, they will coordinate closely with the city and, and will keep us in the loop. So as the mayor mentions, they have some additional expansions that they're working on, and it's, it's really exciting to see what they have been able to do in the last 10 years and what they plan to do in the next 10 years. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items may be approved in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to pull of the consent calendar?
Hearing none, I will move.
Wait, 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 let me ask for public comment first. Stacy, is there any public comment?
The clerk's office has not received any public comment cards. I have not received any emails for items on the consent calendar. Is there anyone in Zoom or by telephone that would like to comment on items on the consent calendar?
All right, seeing none, can I have a motion?
Hearing none, I will move approval of the consent calendar items 9.1 to 9.10.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye. All right. And we're going to public hearing items. Our consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items may be approved in one motion. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask Stacy if there's any public comment.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comments for, from those in the council chambers, and I don't have any public comment via email. Is there anyone via Zoom or by telephone that would like to speak to items on the consent public hearing? I do not see any hands raised, Mayor Gatewood.
All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the council if there's any items you wish to pull.
Do you not move the calendar?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Was the motion by Vice Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Second by Linda.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye. All right. So now we are going to go on to regular calendar items.
Public, public hearing.
Oh, my bad. I'm sorry, public hearing. Stacy, can you go ahead and read the subject?
The subject for item 11.1, Easton Research Park West Tentative Subdivision Map, Project DD 10003, located at the southwest corner of Nimbus Road, Hazel Avenue Extension, and Folsom Boulevard, APN 072-0231-102 and 125.
All right. Darcy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood, members of the council. Darcy Galar with the Planning Department. Before you this evening is a tentative subdivision map. The proposal is to subdivide two parcels into 10 lots plus a landscape and right-of-way lot. The, this subdivision is for future potential 1.4 million square feet of industrial warehouse campus. Just a little bit of background of the site. The site is located within the Aerojet Special Planning Area. This was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 1995. It encompasses approximately 13,589 acres, not square feet. And the project site, as shown on the screen before you, is zoned Aerojet Industrial SPA. A little bit of additional background on that is uses that are permitted by right within this Aerojet SPA, they're only required to come back forward for a building permit. So council will not see any subsequent entitlements unless the use is not permitted by right, so it would need a use permit. So what that basically means is you will not see a future design review for any construction on the site. This evening's presentation will also include a presentation by David Hatch from Easton, and then Chris Stabenfeld from ECorp will handle the environmental aspect. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hatch.
Good evening. Thank you, Darcy. Mayor, members of the council, David Hatch, representing Easton Development Company. I'll try to keep this brief and short. Before you tonight is a tentative subdivision map, parcel map for us at the southwest corner of Folsom Boulevard and Hazel, currently zoned industrial to create legal parcels. We do have a written agreement with the developer. That agreement has not been obviously consummated. One of the things we obviously importantly need is legal parcels to be able to convey title. As Darcy had, had mentioned, actually, if you could go to slide, slide five, use this colored map. What's proposed for the development is lots, development lots one through nine, which is approximately about 107 acres. The staff report lists a total of 178. That's because of the large remainder lot, which will not, would not be part of the development. As Darcy had mentioned, the other small lots are either landscape lots or right-of-way IODs for, for the roadways. We have, tonight, we have our engineering team here to answer any questions. Darcy had mentioned the, the team from ECorp who did the mitigated neg deck, and the environmental analysis is here to answer any questions. I just wanted to mention that we're excited to have an opportunity, hopefully, in early to mid 2022, to be able to potentially bring development and jobs and an industrial campus to this part of the city. And happy to answer any questions anyone has tonight. Before I sit down, I just want to, while I'm up here and I have the microphone, I would really, would like to publicly recognize the city staff, particularly Darcy, Albert, and Quoc, and the staff that we've worked with. Lot of information, and we really appreciate their diligence in getting us here this evening. So with that, again, happy to answer any questions anyone has.
All right. Stacy, is there any public speakers?
Actually, if we could continue, we're not quite done with the presentation. We're going to have, turn it over to Chris Stabenfeld to talk about the CEQA.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. My name's Chris Stabenfeld. I'm with ECorp Consulting, and I was the project manager for preparation of the initial study mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project. I wanted to point out that the document was circulated between September 29th and October 28th of 2021. As indicated, we identified some mitigation measures to avoid significant effects of the project, which included mitigation addressing biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards and hazardous materials, noise, tribal cultural resources, and utilities and service systems. During the 30-day public review period, the city did receive comments on the document. We received a total of seven comment letters, as listed on the slide. Working with the city, we responded to comments, and those were included in your packet in the final initial study MND. I'll point out that none of the comments received triggered the need for any revisions to the project or to the CEQA document and conclusions in the draft initial study. I will note that we did add in a detention basin that was addressed in the draft, but we also did some updates, adenums to the bio and cultural studies that supported the document that are included in the final document. But based on the findings, there was no change in the mitigation or any of the technical studies required for the project. And I will be available if anything comes up during the comment period or if staff has any questions or council has any questions on the environmental process, I'll be happy to help out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, we did receive comment letters after the close of the 30-day comment period, and we provided a response to those comments. Those will be included into the public record. Based upon one of those comment letters that we received from Sac County Department of Transportation, we will be adding an additional condition of approval to the project. It's on the screen before you. The condition basically states that the city will continue to coordinate with Sacramento County on the Hazel Avenue Interchange and Jug Handle project improvements. So this condition is just to ensure that there's ongoing coordination and communication between the two entities. With that, the recommendation is that the council find the project initial study mitigated NAG deck with mitigation measures prepared adequate, and adopt the resolution for the environmental document and the tentative subdivision map. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Stacy, do we have any public comment?
For item 11.1, I do not have any public speaker cards for that item. And I do not have any emails either, but I do have a hand raised in Zoom. And so I'm going to go ahead and call on Amelia. You'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and members of the city council. My name is Amalia Bully-Fuentes. I'm a legal fellow with Lizzo Drury LLP, here on behalf of Laborers International Union of North America Local Union 185. We request that the city refrain from recommending certification of the MND. With an MND, the city is not allowed to weigh conflicting expert evidence. If an expert has provided substantial evidence of a fair argument that a project may have an impact, an EIR must be prepared. Dr. Sean Smallwood, a wildlife biologist, visited the site and gave expert opinion based on available scientific studies, and his observations constitute substantial evidence. On his visit to the site, Dr. Smallwood observed eight special status species, including the tri-colored blackbird. This is a California threatened species that the MND predicted had a low likelihood of occurring. The city states it would have been impossible for Dr. Smallwood to have positively identified the species in flight and near sunset, but our follow-up with Dr. Smallwood confirmed it was the bird's distinctive calls that positively confirmed their identity. He has been working with tri-colored blackbirds for about a decade, and his 500-millimeter camera lens picked up clear markings that allowed him to identify the birds. Next, there was no survey for wildlife performed at the site, only field visits, a literature search, and habitat-based analysis. Dr. Smallwood states the one database that the MND consulted, the California Natural Diversity Database, does not usually contain information on privately held properties such as the project site. Contrary to the MND's conclusion, Dr. Smallwood's observations indicated that a large amount of wildlife rely on the site for movement despite the site's past disturbances. Potential impacts caused by eight new warehouse buildings requires preparation of an EIR. As for Dr. Smallwood's analysis of traffic mortality, the city's response is that his analysis is speculative. However, road mortality reports sometimes rely on research in other states, so relying on a project with 100 miles is therefore relatively close. His predictions constitute expert research that raises a fair argument, and the city has a duty to investigate the wildlife fatalities associated with the project's traffic. Soil Water Air Protection Enterprise, an environmental consulting firm, also reviewed the project, and they found that the MND's air quality model used several incorrect input parameters, which resulted in an underestimation of project emissions. SWYPE also calculated that the project will have significant health risks from diesel particulate matter based on a sensitive receptor 475 meters away. They found a cancer risk of 41.5 per million, which is far above the 10-per-million threshold. And SWYPE proposed a number of feasible mitigation measures that could be implemented to reduce these air quality and health risk impacts. Lastly, it's unclear how project proponents reached a conclusion that the project qualifies for screening from VNT analysis, and there's not substantial evidence that the project will not have a significant transportation impact, and EIR should be prepared to properly analyze this impact. So for these reasons, we request that the city council not recommend certification of the MND nor approval of the project until these impacts are adequately addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else via Zoom or by telephone that would like to speak? No? Lupe, did you have a comment?
Do I?
Yes.
A portable.
I can get you one.
That was one of my initial concerns, was the environmental impact reports, PECLORET in particular. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly. Jet fuel emissions that have seeped into the ground, into the wellwaters, into the waters, into the air, when that is, it's all going to be disturbed in the process. And the dust, anything that is disturbed is going to go into the air, it's going to go into the water. How is that going to be mitigated? How is that going to be handled when this, when all this is either constructed, created? I'm just putting it in lay terms, and I appreciate the previous speaker's comments and her input, because that's been a concern in Rancho Cordova for a very long time, not just within the last 20 years. So what is the city going to do to help or to add a layer of protection for its citizens and residents that surround these areas when the jet fuel that has seeped into the grounds and then disturbed? Thank you.
Is there anyone else via Zoom or in the room that would like to speak under this item? I do not see any additional public comment.
All right, closed public hearing. All right, let's get, David, what do you think?
This is-
Go ahead, David.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just given the nature of some of the public comments, but I could perhaps, Darcy, we should ask either the consultant or the applicant's counsel to speak to the public comments that we've just received in the letter that they addressed. Ms. Wilson, are you asking the director?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilson is with ECorp. She's a senior planner with-
Through the mirror, would you?
And she was the bar mer-
Hold on, hold on one second. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
David, I mean, Adam, let me run the meeting, please, and then I'll make sure I call on everybody. I appreciate that. Michelle, go ahead, please.
Yes. I don't know if it's possible to pull up that last slide. I can just speak to some of the comments. I think it was slide six in the slide deck. We can highlight the public comments. Also, with the first comment regarding the impact analysis to biological resources by Dr. Smallwood, that would have not on slide, sorry, slide seven, I think. So the commenter is referring to the first comment letters submitted by Lizzo Drury during the public comment period, and there's a formal response in the proposed final MND before the council. Each point that Dr. Smallwood presented, we could not find actual credible evidence of fact with the arguments presented, and therefore, we do not see a valid argument for significant environmental impact. Specifically regarding the presence of tri-colored blackbird, the way you determine, positively identify that species from other more common species is a small armband on the wing with a different coloration, and it does not appear possible that a positive identification could have been made during the survey. No photos were presented to demonstrate the presence of the species. There are differences in citation for the number of individuals observed between 50 to 100 to 1 now today versus ECorp had conducted four surveys over the course of four years where we were not identifying that species to be present on-site. We did identify other sensitive species out there and do require mitigation measures for those species that were observed. Several other observations or conclusions presented by Dr. Smallwood were just simply non-scientific, speculative, citing, you know, trying to relate that the project would have a significant impact on roadkill, strikes against windows, significant impact with artificial lighting, none of which were scientific evidence or statistical conclusions were not made. So we were not able to find a fair argument. Kind of moving on to the second comment letter submitted by Lizzo Drury, which was submitted on last Thursday, November 11th, outside the public comment period, it should be noted that many of the arguments, there were incorrect citations of air quality management districts outside of this area. A lot of the comments appeared to be form letter comments. I should note, nevertheless, we did go through each argument carefully to determine whether there was a valid fair argument for significant impact. The first argument was the challenge to the adequacy of the input parameters in Calibod used to calculate air emissions for the project. We feel that we used a reasonable worst-case scenario for build-out based on facts, based on the developer's proposed plan, and used valid input parameters. The commenter presented a speculative build-out scenario that was just inaccurate and not based on fact. So they had some inaccurate data regarding proposed paving and proposed paving construction, for example. So we could not find a fair argument there. The commenter also claimed that it is a fair argument for significant health impact due to diesel particulate matter during construction. The commenter incorrectly cited a WHI guidance, stating that the guidance recommends preparation of a health risk assessment for construction. In fact, the guidance actually states that the health risk associated with short-term exposure is considerably, there's a considerable uncertainty in those analyses. It does not recommend, does not say anything regarding recommendation for preparing a health risk assessment for construction. Also, the project is lower than significant thresholds by the air quality management district, and therefore adequately protective of health risk. Finally, the commenter requested several energy efficiency measures be implemented to reduce air quality impact and energy impact. However, those impacts were found to be less insignificant, and therefore, additional mitigation measures are not required. And then finally, the commenter challenges the adequacy of the transportation impact analysis, specifically why the VNT analysis was screened from being required. Specifically because the project is near a transit site, it qualifies, its VNT per employee is expected to be lower than citywide average, which per the transportation impact guidance under the city is that type of industrial project can be screened from analysis. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
All right, excellent. I'm sorry, did you have, sir, did you have something you needed to say before I cut into you?
I was just going to introduce Michelle.
Oh, okay.
She's on my staff, but I did want to add one thing that, with regard to the fair argument for potential health risks associated with diesel particulate, we did actually prepare a health risk assessment as part of our analysis. We looked at both the closest current sensitive receptors, Mobile Home Park along Folsom Boulevard, and we also looked at future high-density development proposed within the Eastern Place Development just to the east across Hazel. We determined that based on long-term exposure, the health risk, the threshold was 0.9 versus the 10, that is the threshold in per million, so well below the standard. So we did include a health risk assessment, and it looked at both current and future potential receptors in the area.
Excellent, thank you. All right, council, let's start with my scientist, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an interesting proposal. I mean, quite honestly, until it came in, I did not realize that this much land was zoned industrial on the eastern edge of our jurisdiction. So I was just having fun here, looking at the overlay and trying to evaluate, you know, what I think the highest and best use is for parcels here. Obviously, you've got feeding this a full functioning intersection at Highway 50 and Hazel. That is, that's an enormous asset. And I guess the question I might have for the applicant is how do you view the use of that asset with regard to this industrial facility? Because quite often, having that sort of access to Highway 50 would spur a development type that's not industrial. So I'm curious if they examined other possibilities before sort of setting upon this as the best use. I understand there may be some, I understand the current zoning, and there are some users there already. One retail, I suppose, might be underlying zoning of industrial, I'm not sure. And then at least one industrial user plus existing buildings that are there. But I would be curious about that question. So in, actually, to fill that out a little bit more, how do you see that industrial development sort of fitting in with what we've talked about for a while of being a more urban development around this particular node? How does that, how does that interface work?
Counselmember Sander, thank you very much for your question. If I could trouble you to put up slide five again, that would be most helpful. David, I think, if I understand, sir, your question, it's first in part and parcel of what about the rest of the Westboro Plan area, which encompasses all the land to the south of that drawing on the screen, reaching all the way over westerly to the Folsom South Canal, southerly to White Rock Road, and encompassing some 1,500 additional acres. That specific plan and planning effort that we talked this summer about is still going forward. That specific plan area does not include this 100 acres of proposed industrial use. There is an existing valley, Elderberry Longhorn Beetle Preserve there to the southwest of the project, adjacent to Lot 6, Lot 4, and Lot 7. That's a- That's roughly about 70 acres in size, which is not going anywhere. David, but I think to answer your question, there is a current tenant of ours in one of the existing prior Aerojet buildings. It's the Wesco Aircraft Building, also formerly known as Haas Chemical. Industrial use currently on the property, that's the only current business that is on this, these proposed parcels.
Okay.
There is no other commercial business, but we believe that this is an excellent use when you, when you do step back and you look in context of the additional 1,500 acre Westboro specific plan coming, that will make its way to the city, and you look at the uses that have already been approved on the east side of Hazel Avenue in Sacramento County's jurisdiction in Eastern Place centered around the Light Rail Station, which includes 1,600 attached housing units and three and a half million square feet of commercial retail and office space. So we think the collection of uses works very well, and as Vince pointed out, it is currently, currently zoned for industrial, and we think a extremely well-done, high-end industrial distribution warehouse, industrial campus of sort of Class A nature can fit very well. And you're right, sir, take advantage of the fact that the Hazel Avenue, Highway 50 interchange is right there for commerce.
Yeah, I guess the comment to staff would be, in presenting this, I think it's, it's important to get some context, what the, what the transportation plan is around this and what adjacent land uses are or would propose to be, I think, standing alone sort of as it appears. It's not terribly clear how this fits into the, to the surroundings. You'd sort of want to have a better judgment than, than just the site itself with regard to the, to the use and the implementation of it. I don't think that's a comment I'm making the first time, I think I've made that several times. That's it for now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
So in addition to David's comments, it's important that we remember that this is an active industrial area, and that in addition to the one building that is out there now, there have actually been other industrial buildings out there in the past. This was a, an area that was, I believe it was dominated by Aerojet Strategics, and, and then of course, immediately to the west between here and the canal, we have Schnitzer Steel, which is a very intensive industrial use, and then Beck Furniture. But thank you, David, for bringing up the elderberry beetle bushes that comprise this enormous preserve area between this property and the, the boundaries of Westboro, which are kind of, they are as odd as any of our other city boundaries, it's a big curve that goes down toward the southwest. In terms of, there is no question that there is a huge transportation asset in this area, and to the extent that there is an ultimate goal to push Hazel and Nivea Road through to White Rock, that opens up even future possibilities if that would ever happen. I believe that the red line that is visible on the screen at this point, if you can read the slide print, indicates a bike trail or bike and pedestrian, pedestrian connection over to the Light Rail Station at Hazel Avenue. So to the extent that the employees who work in this area would need to drive their own personal vehicles, there's no question that some of them could come on the train, whether they came from further into the city of Sacramento or up into, or up into the city of Folsom. But what this also does, from, from my perspective, the burden that we have in this area is similar to the kinds of burdens that we are experiencing everywhere our residential areas, our newly emerging residential areas are butting up against either historic or new industrial areas, and at that point, that makes me intrigued by the fact that historically in the Aerojet SPA, this is zone, part of this is zone Industrial Office Park, MP. Industrial Office Park was designed originally to provide for industrial areas, and, but to do it in an aesthetic manner that mimics a business professional area. So given the fact that we don't have the ability to do design review or site plan review on individual buildings or uses as they come forward, then I would hope that the landscape standards of the Industrial Office Park Zone, MP, would be adhered to. So that's a question for staff.
Darcy.
Yes, the Aerojet SPA does default to, it would be the county standards that were in place at the time that it was adopted, so when they do come in for a building permit, we will check it against the standards that are in place in regards to landscaping, parking, lighting, and other site improvements.
Sounds terrific, thank you.
Donald.
I don't, I, I, I think David and Linda are probably a little more stoop about a lot of this than I am. This is the first time that I can recall in a very long time that we had a public commenter that called into question the environmental documents.
Absolutely.
That put in front of us. And I've tended to rely on our staff's work in doing that, and I, I felt like I got a very robust answer from the development team as to the claims that were being made. So yeah, the, while I get that at some point what we're looking at when it comes to Westboro and other parts near Hazel, I think we've all had very ambitious and lofty goals as to what that looks like and how much commercial is there versus housing and a lot of other things. I think in this case, you know, the, the thing that I've, I've been very, very surprised at in the last 12 months, probably really the last six months, is the demand for industrial. And if you look around this region, while we do, we are this huge job hub, although we are realizing that the services that relied on that job hub are severely hampered with people remotely working in the last, in the last 18 to 20 months, the industrial park never really shut down. It was needed the entire time, people were going to work the entire time, and there were cars parked down on the street and in the parking lots of the industrial areas all the time. Now, these are lighter employment, right? This is far fewer people per square feet than we see in the office park. It's still a huge demand, and, and I, considering the surrounding, you know, uses and tenants that are there, I, I would be very interested in, you know, pushing the envelope as far as aesthetics, like Linda was saying, although this is, you know, once we approve this, it's by right development, so long as, you know, there's, there's still building standards that we have for these things, and we know what some of our older industrial complexes look like, and then we can see what some of our light industrial and other things look like today. You don't have to look a lot further than Zimdel Bullard, or Zimdel Road, and see, you know, the, the beauty supply company that put up a very nice-looking industrial building. So there, there are examples of this stuff not looking just like, you know, razor wires and, and chain link fences like we do have in, in a few places. So I'm not really that concerned about it, and again, I, I have to rely on our staff to evaluate what this is, and I have a recommendation in front of me, and I think I'm going to follow it.
Excellent. Thank you, Donald. Siri.
I think my colleagues have covered a lot of this, especially with the expertise they have and what the staff has. I mean, I can see that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan and the Aerojet SPA, which the designation is specified for this parcel, which is an industrial zone in the Aerojet SPA. That said, I will go with what councilmember David said, you know, I mean, what's the transportation plan for this? And the second part is, you know, in the comments that were brought up, it's, it's what Dr. Smallbird, what the doctor brought up, I mean, in terms of, I don't know, are these endangered species, what's to this, right? I mean, they have the document that supports this cause, but no photos to show that these birds exist over there. This one is a, is one of those he said, she said, right? I see strong arguments on either side. I think on that one, we need more proof or more documentation to say, hey, you know, it is, we have, there is no substantial proof, and there are no photos, or give them some time to get photos of these, if this is an endangered species, so, species. So that's my only thing out of this whole conversation, otherwise, I'm in alignment with staff recommendation.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I will move that we find the environmental documentation adequate and appropriate, and that we adopt the resolution for the initial study mitigated NAGDAC, MMRP, and tentative subdivision map.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Epstein.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yep. All right. Let's shift and get Darcy, oh, right there, perfect. All right. Stacy, can we go ahead?
And as David Hatch leaves the room, I'd just like to say, thank you for bringing this to us, we look forward to future collaboration around this site and others.
Councilmember Sander, thank you for the comments, appreciate the consideration tonight, and we look forward to working with the city on many, many, many more projects. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Stacy, can you please announce the next subject?
The next subject is item 11.2, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova, amending Title II Administration and Personnel, which would repeal and replace Chapter 2.30 Planning Commission and amend Title 23 Zoning Code, Article 1 Administration, Chapter 23.104 Approval Authority, and Chapter 23.10110 Application Processing and a Resolution reinstating the Planning Commission.
Darcy.
Good evening again, Mayor Gatewood and members of the council. Before you this evening is the sort of last steps based upon the various meetings that we've had on reinstating the Planning Commission. So the requested actions tonight is to adopt a resolution to reinstate the Planning Commission, and then waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, and I will go through these amendments that are being proposed to reintroduce basically procedures, establishment, and authority back into the zoning code. So we would be repealing and replacing Chapter 2.30 Planning Commission. It follows pretty much the same steps as the previous ordinance that was in there. I won't go through each one in detail, but these are all required steps that we need to have in there, so establishment of that membership, which the council agreed to, seven members, two of those being at large. The appointments and terms of those planning commissioners, which we discussed last time would be like a phased-in approach because they're not all on current council member terms. Qualifications, and I can run through, I just want to run through these very quickly. Must be 18 years of age, a registered voter, cannot be elected or appointed to any other official public entity whose jurisdiction includes any part of the city, and shall reside within the incorporated boundaries of the city. We need to have standards in there for removal of office, so it's very basic that any planning commissioner could be removed from office by the city council without cause, notice, or hearing. There's a section that addresses how we handle a vacancy if one were to occur. Additionally, it highlights the duties and functions of a planning commission and refers back to a section in Title 23, which we'll see on a few slides later. In terms of their rules, the planning commission will adopt and establish their rules at the very beginning of, once we get them reinstated and seated. Organization and how that runs is that at the initial meeting, they're going to go over who's going to be the chair and, and the vice chair for the planning commission. Meeting is at least two a month, and how the voting will occur is it's seven members and four of the seven shall be present, and that will constitute a quorum. Additionally, we will be coming back at a later date to discuss compensation, we just inadvertently overlooked that section. In terms of Title 23 Application Process, we're adding in language to address planning commission actions. Additionally, we discussed at the last meeting to clarify that council call up is at least two members to call up an item. This is one of the existing tables within the zoning code, what we have done is add a planning commission section and highlighted in there when they are an appeal body versus a final approval authority versus a recommending body to the city council. So just to conclude before we go on to final recommendations, this is the projected timeline just one more time for the council to consider. You have an action before you tonight on the resolution and the ordinance, the ordinance will come back for a second reading. After that occurs, actually before that occurs, we will actually do an application process that will be about three weeks. Once that's done, they'll be screened for the minimum qualifications of age, residency, and voter registration, and then we will provide those applications to council and come back sometime in January for nomination and selection. Planning commission will be sworn in probably in February and begin their training. We do, we don't anticipate them actually taking any action on a here or an item until probably April. So that's the projected timeline. So on the screen before you is the requested final action, adopting the resolution to reinstate the planning commission, find the amendments that we presented exempt from SEQA, and waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Stacy, I know there's some public speaker cards.
Yes, Anil, would you like to come forward? You'll have up to three minutes to speak, and then I'll go to Zoom unless there's others in the room that would like to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. I'm here standing to, in support of reinitiating the planning commission, but I would like to request to consider one key amendment to the ordinance on the qualification side. The current proposed qualification is restricted based on the register to vote, which is excluding large part of city residents, who are either not registered to voters or a permanent residence. This clause of qualification is restricting, excluding large section of the city residents who are either immigrants, permanent residents, or a dreamers. I looked at the few city council municipal courts across America, especially in California, for planning commission, only qualifications are needed is a residency. Again, there are few cities also including the registered to vote, registered voter as the qualification. If you look at the cities of Elgro, City of Dublin, City of Sausalito, City of Auburn, Livermore, and many more cities are indicating their only qualification is to be a resident of the city. And again, according to the government code 6550 of California, that gives the authority to this legislative body how they want to constitute the planning commission. Most of the cities constitute only five members as their planning commission, but this city decided or proposing a seven members. Again, I really want you to put some statistics here, according to the Global Citizen Survey, in 2000 According to the Global Citizen Survey, in 2008, nearly 3 million US citizens were barred from voting in presidential elections after showing up to their local polling sites because they weren't registered to vote. As of 2016, more than 50 million US citizens were ineligible to vote because they haven't registered. And according to American Bar Association, it clearly indicating there is a large gap in voter registration rate when compared to the whites. Just to mention, there are less than 4.5% African Americans, 17.6% of Asian Americans, and 16.6% of Latin Americans are not registered voters when compared to their white peers. In last 10 years, large population of Rancho Cordova's new residents, who made the city as their home, are immigrants, people of color, and minorities. Planning commission needs to be inclusive for future by directing and managing the future growth and development. I request you to consider the amendments or request I proposed in this ordinance. I'm also giving you the, the paper so that you can look at the amendments or requests that I'm proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Stacy.
Uh, the next speaker is via Zoom Cornelius Burke. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, this is Cornelius Burke. Uh, thank you so much, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is Cornelius Burke with the North State Building Industry Association. We're the voice of the home building industry. Uh, we support the item. We think it's a great idea to reestablish a planning commission. Um, it would actually free up the council uh, to work on other matters. Uh, so, thank you so much. I want to thank Darcy and the rest of the city team on this important item, and we requestly, we request that in respect that you pass this item tonight.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else via Zoom or in the council chambers that wishes to speak on this item? FISA?
Um, I'm FISA Mogul from Lincoln Village. I just want to uh, support Mr. Anil's comments 100%. If we have a council, uh, planning commission, and everybody on there is white, I'm gonna be so mad. Legit, what he's saying um, is true, and it does exclude a lot of your colored community. And again, remember, I was begging you guys to consider having black diversity on the planning commission. Adopting his proposal will make more room for that. So, please consider it. Thank you.
Mayor Gatewood, I don't have any other um, public comment cards, and there are no additional hands that are raised in Zoom or by telephone.
All right.
Lupe, I see her hand.
Well, I'm gonna...
Thank you, I appreciate the gentleman that just spoke. The, these are issues that are near and dear to my heart, and a lot of us don't really consider uh, looking at the parameters and the inclusiveness of individuals, uh, whether they be newcomers, people of color, minorities, women, young adults that are still learning the civic process of being engaged in public participation. Whether they be a, a member of the audience, a lot of the newcomers that have come to our country, and especially to California recently, are highly educated individuals. They may or may not have the status or the requirements that you're looking at. But what you're imposing are restrictions. You're excluding a majority of people that do have something to offer. It's something, it's a, it's a, it's a conscious, conscious effort that needs to be made for individuals that are here, learning, that have something new to offer. Usually, the individuals are residents or citizens that are here already. They take everything for granted. We take things for granted. I am first generation, but it's important to understand that we all started out from somewhere. So, the planning commission, if anything, is a great way, it's a good entry, uh, not only to look at but to appreciate the government that our city is run by, but also by the welcoming of individuals that, that would like to participate, but with those roadblocks that you have set so far in the requirements or the recommendations are, are that. Those are roadblocks. So, what we need to do is open this up and look at the minimum requirement of a young adult, an 18-year-old. They're not gonna have the same experience or even be registered to vote. Granted that we might want them to be registered to vote, but as long as they're citizens or residents within the parameters of Rancho Cordova, and their engagement and participation would be even greater if those were allowed. Thank you.
All right, so, um, yeah, I, I have no problem of adjusting it to, say, citizen or uh, in the area. I think that was an oversight that was on the old planning commission. It doesn't have to be on the new one. And I don't think anyone would ever say that, uh, Neil and his group has not donated a plethora of time towards um, and should be hurt if someone should choose to um, have one of, uh, have him or one of his group sit on the planning commission. So, can we make that change if I got three votes?
If it is the direction of the...
So, can I, can I ask some questions?
Go ahead, Donald.
So, the first question is to staff, is, is the ordinance written as that you have to be a registered voter? You have to be a registered voter to run for city council.
Yeah, you have to be a registered voter.
So, you're, right? It, so is the, I, I was asking staff, what is the, what is the ordinance written as now?
I believe you have to be a registered voter to run for city council.
No, he...
I don't think so. You just have to be a resident. You, you have to be eligible to, to register to vote, but you don't have to necessarily be a registered voter, do you? I don't think that's a requirement.
No, it's a, it's a residency, not a voting requirement.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, so we're talking right now about if, if the people that were on the planning commission were eligible to be registered voters, which I, I don't see a reason why that needs to be a requirement. I will say that, I, I, and I get the interest in the planning commission. Um, it's the first commission that we've had, and then we disbanded it, and now we're bringing it back. My intention, and I think some of my colleagues' intention, you know, is to look at other opportunities to build other advisory bodies, either with code enforcement or with um, the police department at some point, to, to engage more of the public in a, in a, in a, in a formal way, which is something I've been advocating for since probably my second year on council, uh, was not only to sap- reestablish the planning commission, but to look for more formal ways to do it. Um, and I usually use the comparison of, you know, si- uh, a city of 50,000 in West Sacramento has like 27 commissions. I don't think that's what we want to emulate, but somewhere in between the two of those. Um, and the fact that, that we would restrict it to having to be an eligible voter or being eligible to vote, um, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense. Cause yeah, if, if a 17-year-old decided that they wanted to be on the planning commission, um, and they explained to us why they wanted to do that, their perspective may be really valuable, depending on the neighborhood that they come from and, and, and what they're working on. Just like we have, we have, you know, uh, promised students and high school students on the Measure H, uh, committee. So, I, I see no reason why the, the, the members of this body need to be eligible to vote in order to participate. Um, you know, I, I, Anil remembers this story, cause I remember emailing Anil to ask him to sign my city council petition to run for city council, and he had to share with me that he, that he wasn't registered to vote. And to, to look at somebody like Anil who's given so much to our community and doesn't have a say, um, to me is just sacrilege, but I mean, it, it, the laws are what they are, uh, you know, beyond the city council that I can't really control. Um, but yeah, I see, I see no reason that we would need to restrict it. So, I would be fine with, you know, making that one adjustment and just dropping the eligible voter. Because again, if it's some, if it's somebody that's a youth and they're not eligible to vote yet, they may still have a great perspective that we want.
Okay. Uh, Siri, what do you think?
Reaching to the choir here, but um, I have a question on uh, FISA's comment, right? So, on um, diversity, is there a way, I, I'm in alignment with uh, the planning commission to be residents of Rancho Cordova, not registered to vote, so that's off. The second question I had is, can, can you do that as a requirement, like the two at large make one to be a person of color? This could be to city staff, to...
No, I think that's racist.
I love that, the exact...
Hey, I think to the mayor's comment, it, it raises both, well, it certainly, to the mayor's comment, it certainly raises both policy, legal, and perception issues. Um, uh, I think, uh, Mayor, where would you like to start with answering the question?
I, I, I think you, you said it. I think it, it comes with issues if we say that. I think we should just always look for the most qualified and, 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 and understand that we're going to get the best Rancho Cordovans we can.
Well, yeah, just so you know, tech companies have to give out uh, their certain quotas, which we say we want, because we want to encourage more people, uh, more diversity and inclusion. So, they, we, tech companies do that, which is why I asked this question. And um, again, if it doesn't fit in this criteria, going back to the first...
Just, I'm sorry, Siri. Adam, can you answer, is it legal to do that or is it not legal for Siri's thing?
Candidly, I hadn't anticipated that you would consider imposing a, a, a direct quota if you was something that you, you wanted to do. Uh, I think it's a really critical issue. It's not one that I would want to answer um, off the cuff in any way at all.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I would not say definitively no. Um, and it would be something that I would want us to come back with, um, for the next meeting. It's a, you know, it's not a, it's not a question that deserves to be answered lightly or off the cuff. Councilmember, I agree with you.
All right.
Siri, if I could make a suggestion, um, somewhere maybe, I, I, I don't know if we add it here tonight or if we add it in the near future before we actually do appointments, but we could adopt some sort of language or a charter around an interest in diversity and representation of the, of the whole city. Um, kind of like a, like a charging document for the city council to make appointments that take into account various neighborhoods or, or ethnicities or gender or identities, um, in different ways. Um, maybe that's kind of the middle road before we actually do the appointments, that we as a body agreed to a goal that we're trying to accomplish, um, that addresses, I think, some of what you're saying, without saying one from here and one from here and two from this and somebody that looks like that, um, I think would get... I, I, I think that makes it very difficult to, to ultimately, cause if, if you're just saying like, I just gotta find somebody that fits that, that, that mold, you may not get the person that you're looking for. But if we all agree that we have a goal of being as diverse as possible and getting broad representation of the community.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause the outcome that FISA's described, that she would be frustrated with, I think we all would to a certain extent if, if some community was left out. But then again, we only have seven positions to represent 80,000 people, just like there's only five of us to represent 80,000 people. Um, and I will say that in the nine years since I've been here, the two new people, you know, bring a different kind of diversity than I brought when I got elected, which was that I was 10 years younger than the next youngest person on the council. Um, so, there, there, this, this body has gotten significantly more diverse in the last four years or five years.
All right.
Gosh, I was the youngster when I was elected by like, I don't know, Linda, I don't know how far, 15 or 20 years or something.
No.
Definitely takes me back to hear, hear you say that. Um, you know, I, I think I want to identify myself with the mayor's comments and, and uh, Donald's comments on this in slightly different ways. I definitely think, you know, this is a position for which we want to seek the best people. Um, so, Mayor, I'm, I'm with you there. And Donald, you said something, you, I think you said it before on the planning commission. It probably bears repeating. There are people who, um, you know, have thoughts and concerns about the city as, as everyone, everywhere does about, you know, some local governance issue. And I fear, and I think this is what you're alluding to, Donald, that they're sort of imposing the answer to whatever those concerns are, all are being loaded upon this body, the planning commission. And people have pretty broad expectations on what a planning commission is and does, probably far broader than what it actually is as an entity. So, I would just caution, caution everyone, don't, don't have an expectation that everything you've ever wished could possibly happen can be done by a planning commission. Its charge is really pretty narrow within the planning process, um, at the city. So, I'm, I'm, just want to sort of tamp down expectations that it's a, a fix-all, do-all, be-all kind of entity. Um, I would also add, and I, I don't expect I'd have much opposition on this, but, you know, in general, when you think about like the hierarchy of uh, the councils you were talking about, Donald, or the, or the advisory bodies, um, planning commission would be second from the top, and I think virtually everyone's sort of idea of uh, of responsibility, because there is a legal responsibility that they can, they can take on. And it's sort of unique from, from others. There's actual, I think there's actual planning commission related law in, in um, in state law. And I don't know if that's true for any other, for any other sort of representative body that would happen within a city. So, it, this is unique and highly ranked in that sense, um, and a kind of a narrow cast with regard to purpose. So, if you sort of add those things up, you know, I guess maybe legally, we could hire a city attorney who wasn't an attorney. I don't know if we ever would. There's a certain expectation of uh, credibility, experience, having punched the ticket to get that job. Maybe Adam, we'd have to call the director of legal services or something if they weren't an attorney. But, um, can't even do it that way? He's shaking his head no. Uh, so yeah, there are some expectations for, for certain jobs and tickets that have to be punched. Um, I don't think it is absolutely necessary, particularly in a, in a place like California, in a city like Rancho Cordova, that everyone has that particular um, ticket punched. But I just want to sort of frame it for everybody that, that this is a, this is a big deal. It's just not a do-all commission.
Thank you, David. Linda?
Yeah, uh, David, I would just echo that, um, kind of what you just said, that I've said before, but I think especially in the last 18 months, there's been this hope that certain people that have certain projects that they don't want to have happen, or they do want to have happen, that this body is going to be the thing that fixes everything, and it, it's just not. I mean, this is going to be authority delegated by the council to another body. The, the, the things probably that, that are the most controversial, they may make their way to the planning commission in some form, but the decision isn't going to be delegated from the council to them. Um, there may be an advisory, there may be an opinion given or something along those lines, but it's not gonna necessarily be the deciding body for a lot of these things. And I think I heard somebody once say that all zoning and planning decisions should be delegated so that there's no political um, interests, you know, within it. I mean, these people don't run for office, we do. Voters place people here and, and we're, and are expecting that the people that they voted for to make certain decisions. Um, and so, there's only going to be a finite amount of work that, that this planning commission's gonna get. I do remember, very similar, David, um, when we were first adopting or appointing the Measure H.
That's right.
Or, or overseers, and we reminded them what the charge was, which was not to make decisions or even make recommendations of what we were funding, just to look back and verify that the funding that was spent was used in the appropriate manner, um, and to basically bless the staff's report as to the impact. And I remember somebody standing up and going, then tear up my application, cause I didn't want to do that. And so, I think it's just very important that as we move forward with this, and as we have people that decide that they want to apply for this, that they understand what this body is and more, and very much more importantly, what it is not. Um, and it is not going to be the, 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 the full body or the, or the, the, the only say when it comes to planning. It just, it just not gonna be anything close to that. Yeah, thank you.
Linda, go ahead.
Well, I have heard absolutely nothing in the last 15 minutes that, that gave me any clues on how to come down on this. But I have to say, I'm sorry, Donald, I could totally, totally disagree with you. In my 40 years of experience as a planner, planning commissions have a significant impact on the... on the physical appearance and the geographic appearance and the social appearance of their cities or their counties.
Then you're not disagreeing with me. I didn't say that.
Yes, you did. The planning commission, the planning commission is where use permits or a variety of uses that we may or may not consider significant are approved. They approve parcel maps, which can potentially divide...
I'm wondering whether you're disagreeing with me, Linda. I didn't see any of that.
Potentially divide routine city lots that we think of today into four different parcels and completely densify an area. I mean, the planning commission has a significant impact. I don't want to focus on that. When Anil first brought this up as a topic, my concern was not just civic participation, because there is no question that our residents from Telangana, like many others who are not registered to vote in this city, are models of civic participation. And I would never want to take away that accolade from them. And then I'm probably somewhat devastated to hear Adam say that you don't have to be a registered voter to run for city council. So somebody would, one would hope that if somebody had never registered to vote before, the public might really look askance at them in terms of whether or not to vote for somebody who would be in a policymaking decision, decision role. That may not always happen, but from my perspective, that would be an important validation. We want people to be civic participants. We want people to register to vote. Goodness knows several of us, especially when our Senator Padilla was the Secretary of State, and he came to Cordoba High and made a pitch to all the kids to fill out that pre-registration form to get, so that they would automatically be registered to vote when they turned 18. We want all our young people. We want all of our residents who are eligible to go out and vote. And without getting totally global about this, you know, I'm one of these people who had a former daughter-in-law who didn't know she was a citizen until she was approximately 22. She had come here with her mom from Cambodia when she was two. And when she and my son and three other friends got on an airplane to go and tour Europe in 1996 or so, and the French government wouldn't let her off the plane at Charles de Gaulle because she was not, she didn't have the right documentation. She wasn't a citizen of anywhere. And so this kind of discussion is really poignant for me. So the question really comes down to, how do we deal with people who are bringing new ideas which may be really valuable to us, but who don't necessarily have any experience? We're going to teach them the planning aspect. That's what the idea of starting in a few months is all about. We're going to teach them what they need to know as citizen planners, just the way David and Bob and Dan and I were all taught to be citizen planners decades ago. But how do we teach them? How do we give them the familiarity, the familiarization with our processes and our, just our general processes as a government when they are coming from a different area that doesn't have any of the same stable processes in place? And I don't want to be long-winded about it, but that's the discussion that I'm having in my mind. Eric.
All right. So, Darcy, how do I, do you want to, should I make a motion to adopt the change that Anil has suggested?
I believe the city attorney wanted to summarize the changes that he heard and then a motion would be appropriate. Yes.
City attorney?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just to, section 230.040, the council would be removing the portion of that section that says shall be registered to vote and leave the remainder of that section.
Okay. All right. Can we have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge? Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Um, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What was your vote, Councilmember Budge?
I'm going to abstain.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So, do we need a motion to move forward with the planning commission then as well?
Could you please announce the vote?
For the planning commission one or the one we just took?
I believe the vote was only for the change.
The vote was for the change.
For the change only, okay.
Yeah, for, for, for the one change? And then now can we get the vote on the planning commission, please? So, do I have a motion for the planning commission?
With the, with the change, with the amendment.
With the amendment.
Well, we already have it, right?
Yes.
So I'll move that, Adam.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yep. All right. We're going to move on to regular calendar items. Is Michelle here?
She's on Zoom.
She's on Zoom?
Yeah.
I'll wait for us to get her. Is Michelle ready?
Michelle is on.
Okay, excellent. All right, Stacy, can you go ahead and read the subject?
The subject for item 12.1, a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Rancho Cordova, Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District Number 2018-1, approving and directing the execution of a supplemental fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions.
All right. Michelle, staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is Michelle Mingay, Finance Manager. And the item that is before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the final issuance of special tax bonds on and, or for and on behalf of the Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District 2018-1. This CFD was formed in 2018 for the purposes of funding facilities and certain impact fees within the Grant Line 208 project. The financing-related bonds before you this evening approve the sale of bonds in the amount not to exceed $6.5 million. Similar to previous CFDs, the proceeds from the issuance of these bonds are anticipated to be used for payment of infrastructure-related impact fees and/or the construction of infrastructure within the CFD boundaries. The special tax bonds issued by the Community Facilities District are secured solely by special taxes levied and collected within the CFD boundaries and are not debt of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up to any questions the council may have.
Stacy, is there a public comment?
The City Clerk's Office does not have any public speaker cards for this item. Is there anyone in Zoom that would like to raise their hand at this time? I do not see any hands raised in Zoom or by telephone.
All right. Council, any comments or questions?
I'll move approval.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Just to clarify, we're item 12.1, correct?
Yes, 12.1, the one about the bond.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Her hand is raised.
I don't see her.
She fell off.
She's coming back on.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Before I get into this one, I'm going to take a five-minute bathroom break, so we don't have to stop anyone from saying anything. So I'm going to give a quick recess and then we'll be right back to this one. So I am going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. And Stacy, can you go ahead and read the subject?
The subject for item 12.2 is Coloma Road Improvement Options.
All right. Byron and Albert, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and members of the council. I'm Albert Stricker. I'm the Public Works Director. And this evening, we'll be presenting to city council options for improvements to Coloma Road for your consideration. Next slide, please. This is an outline for some of the items that we'll be presenting to council this evening include the background and existing conditions of the road, findings of analysis that we've performed, community input received, and then an opportunity for discussion and council feedback. Next slide, please. At the highest level, feedback that we've heard from the community includes goals for Coloma Road, like reducing speeding to improve safety and reduce the number of collisions and close calls, to avoid negatively impacting neighbors that drive on Coloma Road or parallel routes, to create a better multimodal experience for all users of the road, including pedestrians and cyclists, and to transform Coloma Road into a neighborhood-focused street. Next slide, please. The City of Rancho Cordova has a long history with improving Coloma Road since incorporation in 2003. And since incorporation, the city has invested over $10 million into improving Coloma Road to make it a safer corridor. Some of the investments that the city has made into Coloma Road are listed on this slide, including rubberized asphalt of the entire roadway, which provides a safer driving surface and also lowers road, increasing enforcement, median improvements in specific locations, restriping of the road in many locations, with a number of improvements to make striping more clear and safer, landscaping improvements, new traffic signals were installed along the corridor, feedback signs, pedestrian safety improvements, including but not limited to the image that you see here at the intersection of Chase Drive, high-visibility crosswalks in bicycle lanes, and also signal timing adjustments to reduce speeding along the corridor. And on the new traffic signals, just one detail there, it's actually five total signals that were, have been installed along the corridor over the course of city incorporation. And along with these improvements, we have seen incremental improvements as a result of the investment. But we've also identified that there are additional opportunities for improvement to address unsafe driving behavior and increase access for, again, all users, including pedestrians and cyclists. And that's why we started looking at the feasibility of a bold auction that could provide a more market improvement than the incremental improvements that we've seen already. And one idea that we've considered is reducing Coloma Road from four lanes to two. We've hired Baron Pierce, this is one of the most experienced transportation engineering firms in the region, to help with the analysis. And early on, we identified that there are pros and cons with a lane reduction. And we did some preliminary analysis. We came up with enough information so that we understood some of those pros and cons and understood some of the data associated with the effects of this idea. And at the very beginning of the conversation, we engaged with the community by putting together a community meeting for the preserve, purpose of presenting this idea and really starting a dialogue to hear community input and to hear other ideas as well. And I'm happy to report that we received a lot of input on this idea, as well as many other options for us all to consider as a part of the menu for consideration. And this evening, we'll cover input that we've heard from the community and different options available for consideration. You'll see that each of these options has their own pros and cons. And today isn't necessarily about the, about detailed design. It's not about budgeting. What is important is for us to identify if any of these options could be a good fit for the community, or if there are other options we could, we should consider. And now I'd like to hand it over to Adrian Engel, is a transportation engineer with Baron Pierce. And Adrian, take it away.
Great, thanks, Albert. So wanted to start off the presentation and just talk a little bit about Coloma Road and some of the data that we've collected and some of the unique challenges along the roadway. So as many users know, as they've been out there, Coloma Road is currently a five-lane roadway with a center turn lane. And along much of it has a parallel roadways that, to access driveways, referred to as frontage roads. So in many cases, Coloma Road could be as wide as nine lanes wide at its widest with those frontage roads. It's inherited from Sacramento County design before you guys became a city, similar to other roadways in Arden Arcade, such as Eastern and El Camino. And those roadways carry over 30,000 cars a day. Coloma Road itself carries about 18,000 to 20,000 cars a day, and we'll talk a little bit more about those users. But really wanted to highlight that the roadway itself is designed to carry a lot more traffic than it does. And because of that additional capacity, you have that opportunity to speed much more often than you would if it was a more congested roadway. Also on this roadway, it's definitely used by people other than driving as well. There's a very active bus line that runs along Coloma Road with bus stops you see here on the right that people need to get to from walking or with their bicycle to be able to access transit. And there's some challenges with that as well. And then on the next slide, you'll see that there have been a handful of safety improvements, as Albert mentioned, that have been focused on either safe routes to school, improving pedestrian crossings, or intersection improvements like the Chase-Coloma Road intersection that really tried to make the intersection safer for all users, including people walking and people biking as well. Next slide. As we started digging into the traffic, we really wanted to understand who was driving on Coloma Road on a daily basis. And there, like I mentioned, there's about 18,000 cars that use it on an average day. Of those, about 25% are commuters that are using this road just to pass through and sort of cut the corners. So we see this diagonal sort of east-to-north movement that people are either getting off the freeway or traveling down Folsom Boulevard and using Coloma Road. the freeway or traveling down Folsom Boulevard, and using Coloma Road to cut the corner and avoid the congestion at the Sunrise interchange with Highway fifty. So we see them using this roadway a lot, especially in the afternoon, that PM commute tends to have a higher number. You'll notice on the slide that there's left-turning vehicles, over seven hundred and fifty coming off Folsom Boulevard in the afternoon, and then right back onto Sunrise off of Coloma, about that seven hundred number again. So a lot of people just traveling through in that afternoon above and beyond of the people that are using Coloma Road to get to and from the schools, the churches, and their residents along that corridor. That being said, we also do know that there's a large morning user along the corridor with the high school and the middle school, especially at the West End. So we do understand that there's a lot of people driving and using Coloma every day to get to and from all of the schools along the corridor, and we'll have some ideas on how to address their concerns as well. As I mentioned, with the roadway being overcapacity, we see a lot of speeding along the roadway, especially at the West End, and what we're able to do is pull some data from October of 2019 from a company called Wejo that looks at connected vehicles and average speeds along different corridors, and we've mapped three corridors for this today. First, I want to mention Folsom Boulevard has averages speed that show up in that green and blue area of somewhere between thirty and thirty-five miles an hour is their average speeds. And you'll notice that to the east of Sunrise, you'll start seeing red and yellow, which makes the speeds are much higher in that thirty-five to forty mile range or over forty miles per hour. And I just want to point out, those are the limits of the streetscape improvement projects that have already been done on Folsom Boulevard, so you can see how the roadway design itself can affect how fast people are driving. Zinfandel, a more neighborhood street, has averages speeds that are less than thirty-five miles per hour due to the nature of the roadway, the size, and the intersection control. And then specifically, when we're looking at Coloma Road, you'll notice that its speeds vary from end to end. The east end tends to be a little bit slower where there's a higher density of existing traffic signals, and some congestion created from the intersection at Sunrise Boulevard. As you head further to the west, especially as you get closer to the middle school and high school, you'll notice that the red area really stands out, where the average speeds on a daily basis are over forty miles per hour. This means at least half of the cars are driving over forty. We've also experienced cars driving fifty-five, sixty miles an hour out there. We did some time trials just to see how fast and congested times it takes to get from end to end on the corridor, and it's an average of about thirty-six miles per hour, including stopping at some of the traffic lights, but it takes about five and a half minutes to get from end to end, which includes some of those higher speeds as you get to the western end.
Detective Govea, Rancho Cordova PD. I am the detective for the traffic unit, as council knows. So I'm in charge of all major injury collisions, collision approvals, DUIs, fatal injury collisions. This slide here is specifically to kind of share the aspect of enforcement. Areas can always, no matter what part of the city we're talking about, there can always be more enforcement, arguably, but part of our job is to piggyback with the engineers, where we have three different elements, right? Education, enforcement, and engineering. The first step to our process, or any roadway building process or public safety process, is enforcement and education, right? That's stopping people, issuing tickets, talking to people, talking to students at school, doing public outreach via the media, the normal. The point of this slide is to show that, over these years, especially since I've been on the team, enforcement has been happening on Coloma. The numbers may, from what we heard from the public prior, they feel that they are low. However, I can tell you that we're there, and we're there frequently. So what it comes into context for us is, at what point is a city, do we need to look beyond enforcement and education, right? We have a catastrophic event, the public gets concerned for a short matter of time. I will personally see things calm down on Coloma, I'll see less citations being issued, and I'll see less collisions coming across my desk. A month later, people are over it and we're right back to our routine driving on Coloma, which is very unsafe. If you guys travel to Coloma, I'm sure you've seen it. I would argue that his prior slide showing the speeds is the low end of that spectrum in terms of what we observe out there and the citations that we write. It is not uncommon to be issuing citations for twenty-five, thirty miles per hour over the marked speed limit. So it's obviously a concern, which is why we got together, because it's time that we go beyond the basics and see if there's something else we can do to impact the safety of the roadway.
So Detective, that equates to about triple the number of citations per mile as the other comparison roadways?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, can I ask a question too? Just, I'm sure we're gonna continue to have these conversations, and we've had, obviously, countless emails in anticipation of this meeting, and even in just conversations in general, I know in this last election cycle, you know, there were suggestions about just get more cops and do other things. It'd be really helpful to have year-over-year and maybe some historical data beyond this slide, but maybe start with this slide and get us like the last five years, and so we can at least show the efforts have been made from an enforcement standpoint, and we still have a problem, which is why we are where we are. And I appreciate all of your comments that you just made, but I think it'll also be helpful to show that, you know, it was two hundred and fifty citations five years ago, and now we're at four hundred and fifty, and we still have these issues at two in the morning of excess speed, and, you know, on any given shift, there's three or four squad cars, you know?
That's correct.
Patrol, right, patrol cars, excuse me. You know, three or four cars, and then maybe two or three motors. You know, they can't be everywhere, you know, within the city, and there's a limit to what you really can accomplish when it comes to enforcement. So that's when you move into engineering, like you said.
Yes, sir. And I can work with Byron and populate, we switch databases or citation companies, but I can still populate those numbers for you for the future.
Yeah, I just think it'll be helpful for at least the public to understand if we do move in that direction, what has been the long-term efforts that we put into enforcement and education, and we still are where we are. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Understood.
I'll put in my sense too, that my proposal here was if you could increase the fines on the, we have so many citations, if you could increase the citations that we get on Coloma Road, that was a proposal I had. I don't know how much we could actually do it, but that might actually make a significant impact.
Sorry, can I clarify with you? Did you say increase the fine or increase the amount of citations? Or both?
Increase the fines on the citations on Coloma Road.
Okay. Yeah, so those is a city we cannot touch. Those are set by judicial counsel by the state of California, similar to any criminal But, yeah, I understand the suggestion at least.
Excellent. All right, let's keep going with the presentation. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, we should always point out, whenever we talk about traffic citations, there's a big population out there that thinks we do this for profit, so we should just clarify that we probably get a couple of dollars per citation, like two dollars or five dollars or four dollars, even though it may be hundreds in total citation value, because the state sets those standards for what we would collect. So this is never a profitable activity.
Okay. All right, go ahead, guys.
Hi, this is Byron Tang, Public Works. So on September twenty-ninth, we took to a public outreach meeting the idea of a quick build lane reduction. We received a lot of feedback, and we refined from suggestions a variety of options that you see now, and I'm gonna briefly go over some of these. So at the left, we have option one, which is a combination of using speed, feedback signage, marking, adjusting signal timing, and increasing enforcement. This is kind of, as Albert mentioned, this is kind of what we've been doing, and we can incrementally increase it even more. Option two now is actually two options, and that is the lane reduction option, but we have split it into a two A and two B. Two A is the one we presented on September twenty-ninth, which is using a lane reduction with just striping and limited vertical temporary elements. And then option two B is a lane reduction with permanent materials. Option three is now a landscape median and streetscaping option, but without a lane reduction. I want to speak more about that later in the presentation. And option four was from the community meeting, we got suggestions to try looking into how would roundabouts look on Coloma Road. So option one is the signage and enforcement option. As previously mentioned, we have been doing this on Coloma Road for many years, and there are options to incrementally improve this by adding additional signage. We can look at additional signal timing modifications, like a green wave. And then there are options to increase enforcement, if that is desire, that council wants to look into. Some of the pros and cons of option one. It is the least complex option, so it can be timely implemented, and we do not expect it to divert additional traffic to neighborhoods, which is a concern that we heard during our outreach meeting. Some of the cons of option one is it has a limited change. We do expect limited change in unsafe driver behavior, and we do not think it will change the nature of the cut-through traffic that we are experiencing on Coloma Road, and it would not increase the opportunity to add more multimodal improvements, like for people who are walking and biking. So option two A is the lane reduction option. It is using quick build materials. As you can see to the right, this is mostly just striping and paint. We did add the vertical elements in the buffer, which will help from cars using the bike lane buffer as a passing lane. It does include, since it is a more flexible option, we would use data collection evaluation after to look at improvements and refining it, and it can be done in a single phase. Some of the benefits of lane reductions, we see nationally, road diets, they do have a crash reduction factor, and they are expected to reduce collisions. The speed will be regulated by the lead vehicle, so with the one lane, cars cannot do unsafe passing maneuvers. With repurposing a lane and removing one lane, we can add additional space for bicycles and pedestrians, and it will be more comfortable for them, since there will be more separation between the travel lane and the facilities. And we would see transit improvements with the right turn pockets and bus turnouts.
Question, please?
Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, so if we go back to the previous slide? My slide, there, there we go. Okay, so, um, so in the lanes that are marked with the chevrons, so what happens in those lanes?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, Linda, this is Adrian. Typically, those would just be buffered bike lanes for many of the locations along the corridor, except for the locations where we need to add right turn pockets for access to some of the major driveways along the corridor, the intersections, as well as room for bus pullouts as well. So there's some opportunities to utilize that space. In this particular section was sort of the base case scenario, where you're just having the lanes without those other intersection improvements.
Okay, Adrian, I get your point. So would there be barriers between the green bicycle lanes and the lanes with the chevrons in them? A physical concrete curves, like we have on route here?
Yes, not for this option, and the next options in two B, we will talk about that. This one has delineators. If you look at the, to the right, there pop-up delineators, but we can use vertical elements like that for this option.
And if I can, if I may just add as well, we really haven't performed detailed design, and this is a very preliminary conversation, so certainly we would, you know, if council directed us to look more deeply into this option, we do expect that some vertical element would exist within those buffers to eliminate the ability for people to do unsafe passing maneuvers and to create greater separation between vehicles and pedestrians or cyclists. But there are a lot of different ways to do it. Delineators are one way, that's what's shown in this cross-section. There are low plastic curves, there are delineators, there are parking blocks, there are a lot of different ways to do that. And we, if council directed us to look more closely into, for instance, this option or any of the other options, at that time, we could go into more detailed design.
Okay, so Albert, I'm sorry, you guys may have said, but, um, what's the width of the two travel lanes on either side of Coloma at this point? You've got eleven and nine, are they both eleven at this point? Or twelve and twelve, or what?
Currently, they're both eleven feet wide. We've taken two of the feet of the outside lane and made the bike lane a little bit wider in this particular cross-section.
Okay, I got it. And just my comment would be that, just as we see on Olson Drive, these pop-up posts, things that I think you're technically calling delineators, don't keep people from making unsafe traffic movements.
Okay.
So I get it. Okay, thank you.
All right, continue, guys.
Okay. So on this, with the lane reduction, we do expect diversion from Coloma Road, and from this graphic, the numbers to the left of the percentages are the number of vehicles per day that we would expect to move to different roads. So on Coloma Road, we would expect, we expect three thousand to three, thirty-five hundred vehicles going from Coloma Road to other roads, and that eighteen percent is a total of the daily traffic on Coloma Road. So they would be spread around into the transportation network, and the three main roads that we would expect them to go to would be Folsom Boulevard, so about fifteen hundred to seventeen fifty vehicles would go to that, which is seven percent of its total daily traffic. And then we'd also expect twelve hundred to fifteen hundred go to US, stay on US fifty, and that's one percent of US fifty. And then also, we'd expect diversion to Zinfandel Drive, which is about two hundred to five hundred vehicles daily, and that'd be about five percent of its total traffic. And this was done through traffic modeling by Faren Pierce. So the pros and cons of option two A would be, we would expect to see lower speeds and fewer collisions with the lane reduction. You'd also be able to use the repurposed lane to increase opportunities for walking and biking and transit. It would encourage the commute traffic to stay on other arteries and freeways and other roads, as you saw on the previous slide. And because this is a quick build option, it would provide the city with flexibility to refine design and layout after it's built. Some of the cons is we will expect an increase in congestion during peak hours, and with the result of some of the diversion, they will go to neighborhood streets nearby. So on September twenty-ninth, the city did a community outreach meeting, and that was held, and we proposed the two-A lane reduction concept, and we got to hear communities' concerns and input. Approximately one hundred people attended the meeting, and it was a combination of in-person and online through Zoom. We also continued to receive additional feedback from submissions on the city website and email. In addition, city staff did meet with school officials to discuss some of the issues with pickup and congestion during peak pickup and drop-off times. uh, pickup and drop off times. And we also talked to the police, uh, fire and the city's traffic safety committee, uh, regarding the lane reduction. So on this chart is, um, a tally of kind of the feedback we received and we split it up between, um, um, Sept- the September twenty ninth public outreach meeting and then the website and email submitted, um, feedback. And in the green and purple, the support and oppose, those are, um, if someone specifically said they did not, um, um, they did support or oppose, uh, the lane reduction. And if they didn't, um, specifically say that, we did put it in the category of try something else. So as you can see, on September twenty ninth public outreach meeting, we recorded, uh, thirty-three, um, feedback from, um, thirty-three individuals. And through website or email, we received twenty-five. And as you can see, um, this is the breakdown. But, um, during the, during the public outreach meeting and in the emails, in the emails, um, they did a lot more than just say they supported or, um, opposed it. So we also tallied what they mentioned and, um, some of the specific feedback that they said that couldn't be captured in just a support or oppose. So in this tally is the top six mentions of, um, the feedback we received throughout this time. And on the top three is, um, more enforcement was at eighteen. And then we also received additional, um, requests for signals and synchronization. And then we also received requests about trying roundabouts. And then rounding the, um, the top six, the next three is Coloma Road, um, concerns about Coloma Road and school congestion. And that drivers can drive in the striped buffered lanes. But that was, uh, before we added the vertical elements in the two A option. Then there were some suggestions about lowering speed limits.
So with that public outreach in mind, we've, uh, expanded the options tonight to come up with the three additional, um, options that Byron mentioned earlier. So option two B, uh, also includes the, the lane reduction as previously discussed, but looks at using more permanent materials uh, to be able to develop that. So this addresses some of those public concerns about, um, the ability to drive in the striped buffers by creating concrete islands, uh, buffering the, the bicycle way. You also could utilize some other additional space for additional landscaping and separation for the sidewalk as well. Um, in this, in the, this particular option again reduces the landing each direction, but maintains one lane in each direction and the two-way left turn lane. Uh, this particular option would potentially need to be, uh, constructed in multiple phases, uh, due to its cost. Um, and again, we would not be putting in a landscape median with this particular option to be able to maintain enough clear width for fire truck access. Some additional pros and cons for this option, again, uh, similar to two A, it has the opportunity to lower speeds and, and reduce the number of collisions on the corridor. It does, um, significantly increase the opportunities for walking and biking and accessing transit. Uh, it will encourage commuter traffics to stay on the major arteries and the freeways. And then s- some of the cons for this one also include increasing congestion during peak hours. It may result in some diversion of traffic onto the parallel neighborhood streets as the traffic model suggested. And then jumping, uh, right to two B, um, as your first build, it also has less flexibility than, than doing a, uh, demonstration project with the more flexible materials and the ability to change, change the particular design if adjustments need to be made. Um, in addition to, to the lane reduction options, we also explored a couple of options that did not reduce the number of lanes, but looked at other opportunities to, um, improve, uh, the corridor. Uh, option three, uh, we're referring to as a landscape median and streetscape option without the lane reduction. It installs curbs, gutters, um, uh, meeting islands and potentially bulb outs in some of the side streets. Um, it could, uh, include, uh, landscape buffers and drainage improvements where applicable. And then sidewalks, um, and bike lanes, uh, c- could, could be extended where possible, but with right of way constraints in the frontage roads. They may be discontinuous, similar how they, how they are today. Um, similar projects in the city that have some of these same types of improvements include the Folsom Boulevard streetscape enhancements and then the Rod, Rod Bodry, uh, bike wave improvement. Uh, pros and cons for this option include using permanent materials. Um, the opportu- a lot of opportunities for new landscapes in the median. Um, there is an increased traffic calming and safety benefit by, uh, using narrower lanes and reducing some of the access options, uh, that the two-way left turn lane provides today to minimize the number of conflicts. And by not including the, the lane reduction, we don't anticipate a lot of additional traffic diverted into the neighborhood streets. Uh, some of the cons, as I mentioned, the continuous sidewalks and bike lanes may not be feasible um, without right of way impacts or modifications to the frontage roads. Um, with the multiple lanes, there's probably a limited change to the unsafe driver behavior related to the speeding. Um, and it will not change some of the, uh, the commuter cut through traffic that we see today because it will still be a very, um, uh, nice route for people to bypass the, the sunrise interchange traffic. Um, due to the cost, it could be phased over several years. Um, and then harder to adjust that after installation as well with the permanent, uh, materials. And then the last point I wanted to touch with the, the inclusion of a raised landscaped median, there may be effects for the Fourth of July parade that use this route. And then finally, option four, um, we wanted to explore what multi-lane roundabouts would look like on this corridor. So we'd been some preliminary sketches for what a, a two-lane roundabout would look like to accommodate the types of vehicles um, that would use Coloma Road. Um, we do think that there would be a traffic calming benefit at the intersections for the vehicles that are traveling down the corridor. Um, but we know that there's some, some definitely constraints, uh, related to the available space along the corridor as well as some, uh, challenges for pedestrian and bicycle users on the corridor. So with those, the specific pros and cons include. Um, the pros, again, uh, some benefit for lowering corridor traffic speeds. Um, there's definitely less vehicular points of conflict at the intersections, so the intersections will be safer from the driver behavior. And then the, uh, roundabouts also do oper- do offer an opportunity for increasing the landscaping along the corridor. Um, there are some significant cons with this, with, you, looking at multi-lane roundabouts. They include, uh, difficulty for pedestrians, especially the school kids, uh, trying to get uh, to and from across Coloma Road, uh, dur- during the morning and afternoon time when they're traveling in packs through there. Um, hard, hard to navigate a roundabout when the traffic's always moving and having to find those gaps in traffic. Um, it will require right of way acquisition at, at many of the intersections. And, uh, there may be some potential operational challenges during the peak time with the, the, the school, especially the school, uh, traffic spilling back to the, uh, roundabouts and potentially causing them to lock up. Uh, roundabouts typically work best on a two-lane roadway. And so with maintaining the four lanes on Coloma Road, the roundabouts, uh, not, not necessarily feasible.
Thank you, Adrian, and I just wanted to provide a, a brief summary of the, of the options. So option one is a combination of signage, signal timing and enforcement. And some of the outcomes from that include incremental speed reduction, limited traffic and limited traffic diversion. Option one, by the way, can be combined with all of the others as well. Option two A was the quick build lane reduction. And this is, uh, the flexible option for reducing number of lanes. It would result to some of the high level outcomes, including reduced speed, improving bike and pedestrian access. Um, it, it will cause congestion and traffic diversion. Option two B is, um, the less flexible, um, but more permanent version of the lane reduction with permanent materials. Um, and this would, again, it reduces speed, it improves, improves bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. Again, it will cause congestion and some traffic diversion, both positive and negative. Um, in some cases diverting traffic to places where we, that where we want through traffic to go like fifty or Folsom Boulevard. In some cases diverting some traffic to areas that may be less desirable like Zinfandel Drive. Option three is the landscaped median and streetscape without a lane reduction. This would have limited speed reduction qualities to it, um, limited traffic diversion. It would require some property acquisition if the goal was to provide continuous sidewalk and improved bu- bicycle amenities across, along the entire corridor. And it would have some effect on the Fourth of July, Fourth of July parade. And then finally, we have the, we have the two-lane roundabouts. Um, and this is the only one that we don't recommend. And largely that's because of the impacts that it has as traffic doesn't need to stop to enter or to exit the, the roundabout. It provides some significant challenges for both pedestrians and cyclists. And given the heavy use of, um, by both pedestrians, especially pedestrians in this corridor, uh, we think this would be a really challenging, um, option to implement. It does have some limited speed reduction, um, limited traffic, uh, traffic diversion. It, um, it would re- result, it requires some property acquisition and some challenges as we mentioned for, um, pedestrian bicycle access. And then with that, I really, um, appreciate the opportunity to present to city council. And I would appreciate any, uh, questions, discussion, comments, and ultimately direction from city council.
All right, Stacy, I have some public feedback.
So the city, the city clerk's office did receive one, um, email, uh, from Keith Johnson, and that email has been distributed to the city council and to staff and is available for the public in the back of the room. I'm going to go ahead and start with those that are in the council chambers for those that I have speaker cards. If you have not filled out a speaker card yet, there are pens and speaker cards in the back of the room. And if you could please complete those and then submit them to me so that I can call you by name. Um, after I get through those in the council chambers, I will, um, go to Zoom and, uh, um, call on those who have their hands raised. We'll go ahead and we'll start with Eric Mott. Following Eric Mott will be Catherine McWilliam- McWilliams. Following Catherine will be Ron Williams. Eric, you'll have up to three minutes.
Welcome, Eric.
Good evening. Thank you, uh, for allowing me to speak here this evening. I apologize, uh, I wasn't able to attend the September twenty ninth meeting, so uh, I may rehash some of the comments made then, uh, but maybe you need to hear them again, I don't know. When I look at the presentation on the slide deck, it looked like a lot of the, the information was focused on the Chase-Coloma corner and kind of redesigning that. And, uh, maybe that was my misunderstanding that, uh, you're looking at the entire corridor of Coloma. Um, my comments are going to be kind of focused on the, on that Chase-Coloma, uh, corner because I think there's a lot of incidents that apply there, especially with the school. Uh, I don't know how many of the council members have actually stood on that intersection on the corner there during peak school rush hour times, both in the evening, in the afternoon and in the morning. It's total chaos. I have two children that go to that high school every morning and it's insane. They tell me that the events that happened there with traffic, uh, it's just crazy. Uh, I don't think the school resource officer sitting on the corner high fiving students is doing anything for the traffic, even though they have their lights on, the vehicle going. They do nothing for the traffic, uh, at least from my experience driving there myself and from what my, my children have told me. I'm kind of confused on what the, what the goal is. Are we trying to reduce the speed or reduce the traffic congestion? Because I hear kind of both being thrown out there. But one option just totally adds chaos to traffic congestion. And, yeah, you know, and I don't know if there's, you know, and the other options for, and I, I realize you're kind of not, um, recommending the roundabout. That's just, that reduces the speed but increases traffic confusion. So I, I, when I look through the slides, I don't really see anybody, anywhere where it addresses the root cause of the issue. And if you don't know the root cause, how are you going to really solve it? I see, um, things that you're, the goals that you want to do, such as reducing speed and the number of collisions and close calls. How do you quantify close calls? Has anybody counted them? So how do you know you've achieved that goal? If you can't quantify it, you can't say you've met that goal. As far as collisions go, I understand there's been a lot of catastrophic collisions on that road. Um, people have lost their lives, a lot of property damage. I'm curious to know how many of those collisions are impaired or distracted drivers? And how are these suggested, um, items going to address those issues as well? And that's my time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Following Eric will be Catherine McWilliams.
Hi, my name is Catherine McWilliams. Um, I've lived on Coloma Road for about thirty years now. Um, I have noticed like once smartphones started that a lot more traffic started coming down Coloma because people realized that they could, um, bypass the sunrise intersection in Highway fifty going through Coloma. Um, when I heard about the two-lane option, it kind of just was like, oh my gosh, no way. Because we have so many people who do fly down the road and I agree, I don't like the speeding. I hate the speeding. Um, I don't know why people have to drive sixty miles an hour down that road. Um, so I mean, I, I wasn't able to, I didn't know about the twenty, September twenty ninth meeting, so I don't know if you guys are still open to suggestions or not, but my suggestion would be to put cameras out there and ticket people for speeding over certain miles an hour. Put it back into the community after the cameras are paid off, however it works. Um, I just think doing a one-lane road will increase, um, oh my gosh, she just blinked on the word, but aggression on the road. We already have so many aggressive drivers on the road, people who are going, I, I believe it's the passer throughers, the people who just want to get from one end to the other. I don't think it's necessarily the people who live off Coloma, I mean, and use the road multiple times a day. Um, so, uh, that's my suggestion, cameras, um, or more enforcement. I, I know you guys say you're out there, but for me who live, I live on Coloma, I don't really feel like I see a lot of speed traps. Um, I know people don't like them, but I do, I, I sped as a teenager, I got a ticket and I stopped speeding. You know, I learned my lesson. I didn't want to have to pay a fine anymore, you know, so that's my suggestion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Could, could, I just, as somebody who has advocated for years to change the state law, um, I know that in a lot of states, they put cameras on school buses and if you blow by a school bus, um, I don't know if, uh, the detective wants to weigh in on this. As far as I understand, it is against state law to have cameras to ticket for speeding in California. And that is, that is a state legislator governor problem that, that's not something we could solve for. So I appreciate the suggestion. And as somebody who used to be a school board member who found out that in other states, they will ticket and put mobile cameras like you see in Arizona along the side of the highway, they'll put them on buses in Washington and other places. It's illegal in California, correct?
That's correct. They, they, uh, find that it falls under the definition of entrapment.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ron Williams. Following Ron will be Darlene Briscoe. Following Darlene will be Helen Wayland-Bushaw.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address you guys again. I was here on the twenty-ninth meeting. Since then, we've had three vehicles go through the barricades on, uh, Coloma Road again, three of them. Now, I don't know if the people driving the cars were caught, ticketed, arrested or what. One of my questions is, who's paying to have all that stuff done, repaired? Uh, you had a crew out there for four days over the holiday working on that. Uh, again, uh, four hundred and thirty-eight tickets were written over a period of fourteen months. That's less than one a day. Uh, I believe if the police officer had enough personnel, they could write four hundred tickets in a weekend. But unfortunately, we don't have the personnel. He has six officers to patrol all of Rancho. I understand he can't spend all that time on Coloma Road. I don't know if the one-lane thing would work or not. I'd like to see a fire department go down at three o'clock with the hook and ladder truck if you only have one lane in each direction. I hope you guys have looked into that scenario. I'm sure you have. Uh, the roundabouts, I disagree with you. I think the roundabouts would work. I've seen them work. They work in Tahoe, they work in, uh, Roseville. They work in El Dorado Hills. I mean, in, uh, you know, uh, they do work and I, I've seen them work. They slow people down. The one lane in each direction, that'd be a good idea. But don't go with the chevrons. If you're going to do the one lane in each direction, you better put some barricades up there because I guarantee you, people will not hesitate to drive down those lanes. I, they don't hesitate to drive down them now. They'll, they'll go up on the con- on the sidewalk to get around people. We see it every day. And I don't know if you guys go out there, spend a, go out there at two, two o'clock, go from two to four. Count how many violations you see. Count how many violations you see. You know, it, it's every day. The officers can't be there all the time. I understand that, okay? I got four years' experience wearing a badge. I understand what they're doing. But they have to understand too, that in California, they, you can't write tickets from a camera. It's unfortunate, but we can thank our state legislators for that. If we don't like that, we got to change the state legislature. We haven't done that lately either. We keep, and they can't enforce the laws because they don't have the personnel to do it. Anyway, good luck. I hope you come up with a better solution than what I've seen up here so far. But I don't, I don't see what it can be.
The next speaker is Darlene Briscoe.
Good evening. I live on the corner of Dos Eto'o Drive and Coloma Road. I have one of the, the traffic signs that tell us the amount of speed you're going next to my house. I have a bus stop next to my house. I am a half a block from Chase and Coloma Road. I have congestion, I have kids fighting. We constantly are just in total congestion and fighting and, and people screaming. I've had a car end up in my yard. I, yesterday night, I had two guys from cars arguing out in front of my house because they got in an encounter on Coloma Road. And the biggest issue is speed. They're just speeding down. I go on Coloma Road every day. They have passed me in the bicycle lane. They have passed me in the center turning lanes. There's just no patience anymore. I mean, people are just mad, they're angry, and the main thing we got to do is we got to slow them down. That's what I got to say.
Thank you. Which one, do you, do you prefer any of the options?
Whatever going to slow them down the most.
Okay.
Because right now, nobody's agreeing with anything.
Right.
And I don't see a clear solution. But we've got to slow them down. They're all night long, they're going. I, I am part of Coloma Road 24 hours a day. And all night long, they're, they're, they're screaming down that freeway. All morning long, they're congested. You got kids all over the place. You've got dangerous situations. I mean, what is it going to take to just wake up and say, we got to stop it? I mean, we have collisions down there every, on Chase and Coloma. I mean, the only thing we've improved is when the fence gets barreled down, we're out there faster. When, when the barricade gets blown down, they're out there a little faster than they used to be. That's the improvement we've had. But we're not stopping the cars from speeding.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Helen Wayland-Bushaw. Following Helen will be Fiza.
I don't like any of your proposals. And I'm going to tell you why. Coloma is like no other street in Rancho Cordova. You think you're going to do improvements on Coloma and people are going to go to Zinfandel or Folsom Boulevard or to Sunrise and over? Sunrise is your problem. Zinfandel has speed humps, is mainly residential. Coloma is a mixed use, mixed type of street. My suggestion, when I keep seeing the barrier getting killed at Chase, is you need to eminent domain those two businesses across the street and straighten out the street. You need to really look at all the integral parts of that street. You go from protected lanes by the, when you come off of Folsom Boulevard, where they had the side roads, and then you go up by the school. We spent, you've admitted, you spent $10 million. Is that $10 million of what Rancho has put up? Or is that $10 million combined federal money and local money? I mean, I don't see any improvements. I see more fencing getting taken down at the school. I see the barricades being totally rebuilt, those big things. Maybe you ought to put granite out there, and maybe people won't like hitting them. But you've got to, the easiest way to, to calm some of this racing down is look at where all the accidents are happening. They're happening near the curbs. And I'm not quite sure where, why that one keeps happening to that little house that's been plowed into twice. I mean, that's, I don't understand it. So would, I believe you need to reevaluate what you're looking at. I'd like to see all the data that you guys use. Because I personally think your suggestion that we do this on Coloma, people are going to go elsewhere, heck, no. You see those traffic lights coming off of 50? How, how long it takes you to just get from coming off of 50 to Coloma? That's the reason why everybody goes through Coloma. And I don't agree with your data. Your data says how many people drive left Folsom Boulevard and exit it up on Sunrise? You haven't taken in consideration all the cars that have cut through in other areas. You might not have the same people coming up Folsom that actually end up going left on Sunrise. But what you also have is people turning right at that street near the Goodwill and going around to go up that other street. So your data is really screwed up. I think you need to redo it, have a, do total quality management processes, fishbone, brainstorm, and really look at your data. I don't think you've really looked at it clearly. Thank you.
Fiza Mogul.
Hi, this is Fiza Mogul from Lincoln Village. I do want to say that this is not a traffic enforcement issue. I think it's a design issue. I'm leaning towards 2B. I do have concerns about vertical elements. They need to be tall enough to make a difference because we've seen in the past, like on Croydon, where we had a, like a ground level element, it just kept getting knocked off by vehicles. So the vertical, any vertical element would need to be more significant, not necessarily big, you know, concrete curbs like at Rootier. I'm hoping for something more attractive. And I've sent in, you know, like an example from Toronto. Another thing that I, I have a concern about, well, first of all, my focus is not on the cars, it's on safety. And I especially want to advocate for bike safety, pedestrian safety, and, you know, all, people of all different ability levels, being able to move safely along Coloma Road. And I have concerns like beyond McGregor, that, you know, once you come through a sort of road diet situation, people are just going to have those lead foots. And I was thinking that we should consider what Folsom did. I think in 2019, they put cameras. Now, these are not like for ticketing purposes, but it's to, I think, time the lights. And I asked one of their engineers, and he said that it was successful in, in mitigating speeds. So that might be something that we can incorporate in conjunction with 2B. It might be costly, but it might be worth it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lupe.
Thank you, Stacy. I've had time to rest. My name is Lupe Trevis Hernandez. I live in the Sun River Development area off of Trinity River Drive. I'd like to ask how many council people live in this particular area off of Coloma Road? Nobody? Okay, let's move on. For a city this size, the public participation is low. When you were doing a study on the canals, you had public participation in different areas of the city. Back in the day, 20, 25 years ago, when we needed to get the community together, we'd get them, get them together over at Mills Junior High, Mills Middle School. Access and getting to and being at City Hall at 530 is impossible for some parents and individuals that have other familial obligations. A, a meeting closer to where the people live or where it's, the issues taking place by Coloma Road is important. I agree with Helen in what Fiza have said. Number one, pedestrian and bicycle safety is important. I don't think citizens, citation to citizens, they don't save lives. The citations that you do only put a dent in a person's pocketbook. The side signage doesn't say, stop racing. Your study, your first initial study in September ended at McGregor. What about the kids walking or bicycling to Mitchell Middle School and entering El Monto, where a young lady died during the summer on her first day of summer school a couple of years ago? What happened to these other entrances and exits and intersections where our families live beyond McGregor? And I'm talking about El Monto, Benita, there's a bunch of jaywalkers. We've had a crash at the condos backing up to the Sun River Development. And there's a missing chunk of wrought iron fence. Tricky River, Tricky River Drive intersection, Trinity River Drive intersection, all of these areas have been ignored. There is a problem with people and cars running across the street in the middle and turning and getting into the middle lane so they can go into Goodwill. And they almost hit head on with individuals that are trying to get into the left lane to turn onto Trinity.
Your time is up.
The recent death on Sunrise Boulevard was caused by a citizen racing, going down Coloma Road, and he was caught on cameras. Think about that. Speed is a big problem in Rancho Cordova, off of Sunrise Boulevard. We've seen it, we live there. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joyce Rosenberg.
My name is Joyce Rosenberg. I live a half a block of Coloma, on the corner of Cordova Lane. People coming off of Coloma do 55 going down Coloma, Cordova Lane, so that they can do a left turn on two wheels to go down Audubon Way, so that they can do a right turn to go down Glen Fair on two wheels. It's a dangerous place. But they're coming off Coloma where they were started out by doing 55 miles an hour minimum, all day, all night. Come out there with your cops at 2:00 in the morning. It is, it is a fright zone. It's the Indy 500. It's shrieking motorcycles. It's ghastly. And I don't know how, I don't have any, I don't have any ways that I would suggest just get the cars off the road. That would be the easiest, or not the easiest, but it's ridiculous. But I don't know the solutions. I just know that it's just awful out there. And it seems to me that since we had the lockdown with the pandemic, people seem to be angrier, less kind to each other, more hateful, more aggressive. It's our world, this is not just in Rancho, it's everywhere. It's all over the place. And I don't know how to, what to do about that either. I do think cameras would help if we had, I don't, didn't know you couldn't take, give people speeding tickets for cameras. I had no idea. So that was, you learned that tonight. But the idea of that in a 17 month period, we have had 26 citations a month. Folks, I could walk out there from my house and give 26 citations in a morning. So this is, and it'd be a little dangerous, I don't want to do it. But this is ridiculous. That is a ridiculous number. I know we don't have enough, I don't think we have enough policemen out there. I don't think there's enough traffic cops. And the other thing is, maybe if we shifted like the second Monday of the month, hit Coloma Road. The third Monday of the month, be on Zinfandel. The fourth Monday on Sunrise. They're expecting never there to be anybody out there. They're expecting on Sunrise, they're expecting on, and we're getting all those new people south of Fols, south of Folsom Boulevard, in Rancho, in, in Folsom. All these people are going to be out there on our streets. Scares the heck out of me. I know that the police can't be everywhere. I would like to know how many deaths and serious injuries there have been over the last, say, five years or two years. There must be some statistics somewhere, but I keep hearing how many cars are out there. How many accidents have been out there? Caltrans tracks accidents on freeways, you guys might need.
Your time is up.
Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you for being here. I sure as heck hope we can find a solution, folks.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Darryl Langwell.
Nice.
Got that one in just in time. Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor Gatewood, council members, Darryl Langwell, Vineyard Neighborhood. I'm on Ariman Drive, and I use Coloma quite a bit. I don't see an easy solution. I hope something can be done. The bottom line, whatever the solution is, everybody's going to have to take a little bit of hurt. It can't be put on just one group of people one way or another. Everybody's going to have to feel it a little bit and like it or not, accept it. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to Zoom now that I have addressed all the speaker cards that are in the council chambers. Right now, we have four hands that are raised. I'm going to start with Alani. And I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm a resident of Cordova Vineyards. I live on Chardonnay Drive. I am a daily user of Coloma Road as a pedestrian, probably multiple times a week as a cyclist and often as a driver as well. It's not safe with any of those modes of transportation. I would say by bicycle is definitely the least safe. And it's all a function of speed fundamentally. And we've heard from people whose jobs and life's work, it is to study how to affect speed on roadways. Coloma Road is built like you could land a plane on it. There's nothing preventing a person that wants to from hitting 70 to 80 miles an hour besides traffic. So I understand that there are concerns about congestion, but I do think that what you're hearing from everyone are concerns about speed. And I think that those two things are kind of in opposition, unfortunately. In order to improve safety, we have to reduce speed, and that might mean a little bit more congestion. I would wonder how many minutes to their commute people would think it was acceptable to add, if it meant that there were no more fatalities on Coloma Road? If it took you two to three minutes longer to get to the McDonald's or get to work, would that be an acceptable trade? If it meant no one was going to drive their car through your living room on Super Bowl Sunday and kill your mother, which is a documented event? I also want to stress that I've heard now twice, about 25% of commuters, I think is the figure, are not residents of Rancho Cordova. So we have an overbuilt roadway that is extremely dangerous, not usable by other modes of transit reasonably. It's not reasonable to bicycle along Coloma Road. And the reason is that we are subsidizing commuters coming from over the river. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Autumn Eberhart. Autumn, I've unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, this is Autumn Eberhart from Cordova Meadows. I'd like to thank the staff for adding in these additional options as they weren't presented during the public meeting in September. Thank you for incorporating them. I'd also like to thank the speaker who just spoke ahead of me on Zoom. She brought up some really great points about adding a couple of minutes to save a life as a family. She brought up some really great points about adding a couple of minutes to save a life. That's a fantastic point. I, I support option two B. I would support option two A as a pilot program to see what it's like removing the, the, one of the lanes. But with the idea that if that's, if that works out well, then ultimately we put in some of the barriers. And something that's interesting about two B, and it's very common, is that you have like the sidewalk, the strip of life. The bike lane and then a median or a protective barrier and then the lanes. Why don't we move the strip of life in between the bike lane and the road? So then you'll save three feet from that buffer for the barrier. And then you're, you're adding trees and vegetation to help protect the bikers instead of a concrete barrier. Also kind of adds nice for aesthetics. And then you could make that barrier a bio slail. So you can incorporate the stormwater runoff into it to help filter the water. Which also waters the plants, the native plants you can plant there as well as the trees. So thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Anil. Anil, you'll have up to three minutes and I've just unmuted you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I nearly used the Coloma route to drop my daughter at River View St. Em Academy. And there are two spots really feels me dangerous every day when I drive, especially Coloma and El Manto. When I'm taking a right turn at El Manto, the cars really park close to the right hand side. I think that's a really troubled spot. Lot of time people are rushing to drop their kids at school. If you guys can restrict something on that no parking zone or some barriers, that really helps. And kids are crossing every day there. And I think in the past in 2017 also there is accident and fatality. Especially on that intersection. It's every day it really scares me. And even I'm being a responsibility sometimes even I lose my control and I speed up. And if there's, definitely there should be some deterrent. And same thing at the Trinity River Drive. I think there is a kind of cross. Even though when the cars are going on a signal, the right turn people coming from the Trinity Drive. Trinity Drive, they're really speeding up like chasing with a green signal. I think those are the really troubled spot. I like, you know, public works and the, ask the police department to look into that one. And see how safe we can make those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Anil.
The next speaker is DC. DC, I've unmuted you and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Yes, thank you for having me on. They show, they showed the diagram of the speeders going from Chase to about Georgetown all at 40 plus. That's all school zone right there. More enforcement is needed there. They used to have six motorcycles out there all the time. It would slow everybody down. You could put three there, let them write tickets. People will see them. They'll take off again. Have the other three pick up the rest of them on the other side. They could sit there for a day, go another day. It, it'll slow people down. Option two A and two B, what do you do with emergency vehicles? Also, the, the lead car is, is setting the pace. What if he's the one that's going 70? So everybody's going to go 70 possibly. All the, all the frontage roads are marked with. Bicycles use frontage road. They don't. They go out there and try to run on that little shoulder. Came on them. The frontage road is a full road, not, not crowded at all. Maybe, maybe you should try slowing everything down. Go to 35. They've slowed, they've slowed traffic down on Folsom. Folsom used to be 45 all the way through. Now it's partially 40 to most of the town. Zinfandel used to be a 30 mile an hour speed limit. It's down to 25. You can't add, you can't just add in cars and everybody gets impatient. They're just going to go faster. That's all I got for you.
Thank you.
Dennis Dunn is our next speaker.
Thank you. Dennis Dunn. I live on Barbera Way. I've been involved in the city of Rancho Cordova in traffic transportation since 1973. I've been on Neighborhood Traffic Safety Committee for the city of Rancho Cordova. Actually before it started as a city. And Coloma Road has always been an issue. But there's a couple of things that. As daily users and people whose kids have walked to Mills and to Cordova. From Barbera Way where I live. It does seem that it's gotten a lot worse in the last 10 years. And the speed is a problem. The curves in the road are a problem. And the state laws are a problem. Not being able to use cameras. Yeah, they got rid of that. But how the speed limit can be set and enforced is another problem. So what we, the citizens of Rancho Cordova and the city council needs to address. Is exactly what is being presented. Options to slow people down and make it safer. And if that means to go to single lanes. There are some areas that really are going to be hard to work with. One of them is Chase and the approaches within two blocks of it. As some of the ladies and other people have said today, in the morning, that traffic. The left turn lane turning onto Chase on Coloma backs up past Del Cetto. The right turn backs up to where the people are trying to get into Mills Middle School. All of these things are issues that may not be corrected in that area. By going to single lanes because it's going to make it a heck of a lot worse. Some, some suggestions might be to take some of the school property at Mills. And make a drop, another drop off point. And make another right turn that can get onto Chase and get people off of Coloma. So there's some other options still out there, but you know, if it comes down to it. Closing the lane needs to really be looked at for where it's going to be effective and where it can't be. And the concern goes all the way to Sunrise. Coloma Road was designed as a, as a collector. And it's a, was a major road in Rancho Cordova to get through to, from Folsom Boulevard, which was Highway 50.
Your time is up.
Sunrise. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Gatewood, that's all the public comment that we have.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Let's hear from my planner. Linda. Linda, you're up.
Okay, um, so I appreciate all the comments that everybody has made. For those of us who have driven in the area, driven Coloma Road for, I mean, at Infinitum. And taken kids to Cordova, taken kids to Mills. Driven to preschool, driven to hair appointments, whatever. There's no questions. It's a problem and that's the number one thing we all agree on. Something needs to be done. So the issue is. Right this minute. I suspect all of us want to preserve the ability of Coloma Road to, to handle the Fourth of July Parade. Because to date, we really don't have a good alternative. So we need to think about things that we do that can figure out how to slow the traffic down. Without eliminating the Fourth of July Parade on Coloma Road. So that would be one concern. Another concern for me personally is that my husband is civil engineer and I totally support roundabouts. But it doesn't seem that Coloma Road is probably a good location for roundabouts. Given the. The configurations of what would be the logical intersections, roundabouts. And even though Elk Grove put in at least one and maybe two roundabouts on Elk Grove Boulevard. Those roundabouts were designed with the. When, when the housing on both sides went in. So we don't have that option. For staff, okay, first of all, let me say, I completely agree with Joyce. These last two years, traffic has gotten angrier, more hateful and more aggressive. We can all agree on that one. So for the engineers, for Byron and everybody. Even though you're providing statistics about the number of people traveling. Left or right off of or onto Coloma Road. You still have a traffic count of 17,923 cars. On Coloma Road basically from Chase to Sunrise. Which says to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. That says to me that there's a whole host of people who are using Sunrise during the day. Or during whatever the traffic count period is, to get back and forth on Sunrise. Not necessarily commuting from Highway 50 to the Sunrise Boulevard. And knowing what the traffic counts were in the past. And knowing that the traffic count from Mason Field Road to Coloma Road was much higher. Than the traffic count from Coloma to Ariman or Ariman to Zinfandel. I would agree with you that you would think people were coming off of Coloma, I mean, off of Highway 50. And. Going east that couple of blocks to get onto Coloma. To go north on Sunrise to avoid the traffic congestion. But this statistic doesn't seem to bear that out so much anymore. And maybe it's simply because of a, it's like a point in time count. Maybe, maybe things have changed in the last couple of years. A couple of other points that were really important. The concept that. Just like when we did with Measure H or with incorporation. We should get out maybe into the, have a meeting at Mills. Or have a meeting at. One of the churches or one of the. Elementary schools along the way might be a good idea. The two options that are presented that people seem to kind of coalescing about. Would be option two A and option two B. And what we might think about doing is looking at this as a phased approach. We don't have to think about designing and constructing the ultimate currently. But designing it in stages. There's several things we want to preserve. Such as the Fourth of July. But we want to ensure, or we want to try to make sure that we slow the speeds down. And I completely agree with everyone who has talked about the pedestrians. I talked about Charlie Budge, Charlie Budge earlier. And he would walk from, he and his friends would walk from Cordova High down to Mills Ranch. After school every day to congregate at one of the kids' houses. And currently it's probably really not safe to walk along Coloma Road. So that's something we need to cure. That's something we need to really take into consideration. So I would encourage that there be. Little more design effort put into this and. And maybe a couple more community meetings. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Linda. All right. David.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got. Uh, quite a bit actually. This is a complicated topic. And I drive Coloma probably just about every day for, for one purpose of another or another. If it's not dealing with high school or a, or a sport or an errand. It's going to church or any number of other things that put me on Coloma on a regular basis for the past. Oh gosh, I don't, let's see, 12 years I've probably been on it at least twice a day. So I've got some experience with it, more on the western end than the eastern end. But that is the, the interesting part by, by Chase. So let me just go through some notes I had to make here. Oh, and I gotta say upfront, I don't know, I don't know if there's an award for this sort of thing. But this was the best public commentary I can ever remember on a topic. You guys were awesome, all of you who made public comments out there. Really, really good stuff. Thank you for all the, the thoughtfulness you put into that and the, the lack of anger that you expressed over a very frustrating situation. I'm just so much good stuff in that public commentary. So I would start with being the science guy. I'd start with a question about data. And I don't really feel like I've got a lot of data. I feel like we've got a lot of subjective feeling about things and some numbers. But we're not comparing them to anything. I don't know where anything rates. Uh, I think the speed data is probably the best, that little graphic we saw that showed speed on other corridors. Even there, you know, it's sort of a, a color comparison as opposed to a true numeric comparison. The number of tickets don't mean anything to me if it's not compared to other jurisdictions by, or locations by time. And maybe even type of, of violation. So if you want to talk about crashes or deaths or injuries or speed or. Tickets or the number of drunk drivers. All those sorts of things, I think data wise, we've got a, we've got to get a better handle on. We either have a huge problem here or we barely have a problem here. I mean, it could be either based on the, the data I'm looking at. There are some things that have happened in recent years and certainly there's a COVID pandemic influence here on, on people's attitudes about it. The drivers in particular. But you know, the one, a couple of people mentioned, you know, cars crashing into that one house. There is no geometric reason why that would ever happen. I know in one case, the, the driver was drunk enough that he never took his foot off the accelerator. It was all the way to the floor. And he had kids in the backseat. I don't know if there's an engineering solution for that, someone who's that intoxicated. Uh, in the other case, I believe it was also intoxication. So. The drunk driver engineering is probably different from the speeder engineering. It's probably different from the engineering necessary to get people through and it's different from the engineering necessary to keep it safe. But I would prioritize safety. I think that is the main goal. That's the what that we're after. And I would probably say pedestrians have to be safe first, then bikes, then cars. That's just kind of a simple logical order of things. There are, we've done a lot out there as, as you mentioned Albert. I really appreciate that rundown. I think it's important to mention that. $10 million would be our dollars plus grant dollars. I would suggest most of it is grant dollars. Things that we compete for and win. We put in five, I think it's five signalized intersections. The intersections were there. Obviously we added signals. They're not at all cheap. Maybe a million or two per intersection. That probably accounts for a lot of the improvement plus other things. The, the speed reporting signs that are there. We've done a lot, but it's still not enough. We've done a lot, but it's still not enough to fix the situation. You know, if there was ever a perfect location, I would think for speed cameras, this is the scenario. If you had a speed camera, speed cameras that you could set up in network down Coloma and have them work twenty-four seven, uh, I think we could significantly reduce the amount of speeding there. It would take a little time, people just have to spend some money out of their pocket on tickets, but that would have a big impact. But unfortunately, if the state sort of politics being what it is, we're, we're unlikely to get that. I think that becomes a public employee union issue with the state legislature. But it's not, with the current makeup of the legislature, we're not likely to be able to address that. Um, TV traffic use is a big question for me. I don't know how it's prioritized, where it's deployed. I don't recall getting really good comparison data. Um, how we choose to deploy it, how many tickets we give, how does that vary by location? There's a ton of data here that you could even organize by GIS to get a feeling for what we're doing with our, with our traffic, uh, control officers. We've got more, uh, of those officers than neighboring jurisdictions on a per capita basis. So we're, we're committing more resource to it. But I don't, I personally have never really seen a great report on how that is used. It appears to be a judgment call by command staff. Um, I think I'd like to see some numbers on that. And it's certainly necessary for some of the data I think we need, and I mentioned earlier. I think a lot of people here have said there's no easy fix. That is certainly the case. You know, we've got existing conditions out there that make it difficult to be a pedestrian and cross the street. And imagine how hard it was before we put five more signals in Coloma. The stretches that you would have to go if you were gonna cross at a signal were extraordinary and frankly unreasonable. We have a number of apartments along that stretch, people who are, uh, pedestrians most of the time, people who, as one of our people testifying tonight said, uh, cycle. And that, that road is not designed for them. That road, as Dennis said near the end, one of our local traffic experts. Um, luckily, his career began after this was designed, he's not responsible for it, but I thought I was gonna make that joke at his account. Dennis, did you design this thing? Because he did work at his county.
Dennis is not to blame.
Dennis is not to blame. Uh, but Dennis could be part of the solution. But we just need better engineering and better design for this road. And the question is, how do we get from where we are to there? So there being no easy fix, and we've got to play off speed versus congestion versus safety versus the unmentioned one I think is beautification. Although that kind of goes along with some of the solutions better than others. I've got, uh, questions for staff that I'm not gonna expect a response tonight, but is there a better way to do that division of space between cars moving in this lane, bikes moving in this lane, and pedestrians moving in a, in a third lane? Is there a way to safely combine bikes and pedestrians on a wider sidewalk? Is that acceptable in any jurisdiction? If, if that was true, you could do cars landscaping, then bikes and pets. That would seem to be a, a nice option and leave a middle lane. I'm thinking, I guess this is two B, a version of two B, but a significant variation from two B. But a three lanes, there's a turn lane, there's a one-way, two-way lane, and then there's very safe pedestrian cycling and very attractive landscaping on either side. That would seem to be a nice, uh, a nice outcome. Undoubtedly, though, very expensive. I, I don't see any proposal here for sort of messing with the frontage roads. The current situation is telling a cyclist, you know, well, now you're on Coloma, well, now you're on the frontage road, or now you're on Coloma. That doesn't seem reasonable for a cyclist. And my, my standard for a cyclist is a parent out there with a kid under the age of ten on a bike, do you feel safe? I'm not so worried about the, the road warrior cyclists who will, you know, like to take on traffic. Um, that's not really my concern. My concern is can a family move itself? In particular, can a family move itself to something like the American River Parkway if they live along Coloma? Because now I think the answer is by and large, no. They probably gotta put the bike and a car and drive to it as opposed to just simply bike from their house to the river. That's not a, that's not a great outcome for our community. Chase in Coloma is an, uh, is a really big mess. I don't know how often accidents happen there. Um, some data on that would be interesting. How often do we get someone else to pay for it? That's a, that's a really great question. What are, what are repairs they're costing this year might be, might be interesting. If there was a way to do a roundabout at that location, I think it would be an exciting place to do it, but we'd probably have to acquire and use a lot of property to accommodate that. But it would, uh, if people could learn to use it, and that's always the scary part, when they put in a roundabout in an existing neighborhood, people don't wanna learn to use it. But if you learn to use it, it would probably increase the throughput. Even in a situation where you've got all those kids rushing and parents rushing to school in the morning, we'd need to look at a, a parallel situation somewhere and sort of the engineering dynamics, traffic engineering dynamics to that. But I, I think that would be a, an asset actually to our community if you could, if you could do that. But the cost could be extraordinary. I mean, that could be a fifteen million dollar interchange improvement or something, uh, intersection improvement or something, I, I don't know. But, you know, in this funding environment, is it grantable for pedestrian and bicycle benefit? Perhaps. Um, other issues that weren't quite touched were if you're on Coloma and you are west of Chase or south, southwest of Chase, and you're trying to get to Fulton Boulevard, there are some really awful pedestrian uh, areas there where all those school kids are jammed onto a little narrow, I don't know when that was built, looks like depression era bridge over the canal, it's probably not that old, it's probably in the fifties. But it's not a very safe situation, morning and night, for kids that are going to and from Cordova and Mills and, and St. John Viani School that's also, also right there. So this is a very big discussion. I don't expect answers to any of that, um, unless someone's got anything ready. But I think this is gonna warrant more community input, as Linda said, and, uh, and more discussion among us and some sort of probably a phased plan. Uh, if I had to fix something, I'd say two A is what we should do is on an experimental basis. See what happens in areas where it seems best, um, attuned to. But, um, we gotta keep a very big picture in mind here. We also have that project going out there that re-envisioned what the Chase connection from Coloma to the American River Parkway is. Creating a, an off-Chase bicycle pedestrian, like class-one trail, running all the way down the school property to the park. That's a very exciting, uh, very exciting option. It doesn't mess with the parking, just creates a, a very, very safe and attractive amenity um, and a route for people to get to the Parkway. So I could probably go on, but I'll, uh, I'll cut it off at that point. And again, thank you for all you guys who, who, uh, commented tonight. Those comments were really awesome.
David, ditto. Um, and two ironic points. Um, the reason there is a cinder block wall there, there used to be, uh, just a, a basic wooden fence, and it got run into so many times that the county transportation department finally built the Masonry Wall there to protect that house. Um, the other thing, um, all of our beautiful street improvements, if you guys coming out of, um, Cordova High will notice, the, um, the barriers, Cyrus and, and Albert, I don't know what you call the, um, the kind of, it's not K-rail, but whatever you call the metal rail that's stuck on the post there, it's already been run into.
We're talking, uh, specifically, Linda, about the, the bridge over the Drainage Canal?
No, ta- uh, talking about the, um, the corner from
Yeah, I know, but my, my mace, my old, like, depression-era architecture was that little bridge over the Drainage Canal. I don't know, probably in the fifties. Dennis might know.
If Rancho Cordova were that old, it could be a WPA project, but we're not that old.
All right, uh, Donald, what do you think?
Um, not a lot to disagree with from my colleagues so far. Um, I, I would again commend, um, staff and, and the public for their, their, their comments and their direction here and their study of this. Um, I think I do disagree with one of the, uh, commenters that I, I think we do have a lot of data here. I think there's more that we could, we could learn. Um, and ultimately, if, if we had spillage, if we did something like two A or two B, and we had spillage onto, onto other surface streets, we'd address it like we do with speed bumps on Zimfendel and other things like that, if it came to that, right? Um, but I, I think David laid out what my priorities are too. Um, and they are in this order, pedestrians, bikes, then cars. Um, most importantly, lo- lowering the number of lanes and slowing traffic, well, not slowing traffic, but lowering the number of lanes and creating more congestion at pr- pretty much two hours to two and a half hours out of the day affects mostly people that don't live in Rancho Cordova. These are people trying to get back to Carmichael and Roseville and Citrus Heights and a lot of other areas north of, of the river. Um, and I'll be frank, I don't work for them. I work for the people that live on Coloma. Um, I, somebody I think did ask, do, do any of us live there? Um, I did live in Sun River for a year. I did use it on, uh, multiple times a day. Um, and I know that you can't move between four-thirty and six o'clock. But after that, it's just a raceway. Um, and it's always like that. And in the morning, I can tell you, and I did spend a lot of time there in the last year, um, the, the, the speed limit, somebody had actually said, lower the speed limit. The speed limit in front of the school from St. John Viani until you get past Chase is twenty-five miles an hour. And I can tell you, if you drive twenty-five miles an hour for about a mile and a half there, thirty cars will pass you, very, very fast. Um, so lowering the, the speed limit isn't really going to be the solution either. Um, and, and unfortunately, like I shared, certain technologies that are available in other states are not available to us. Um, and, and I can tell you, I personally tried very hard to make Rancho Cordova a pilot city to try it out. And, and I couldn't get any one of my friends in the legislature to even entertain introducing a bill like that. Um, so yeah, and I mean, even the comments around enforcement, I mean, like, at what price and how many cops do, do we get to a point where we prevent somebody from drinking and getting behind the wheel? Um, I, I don't think we're ever going to enforce our way to a safer community from that standpoint, to prevent that person from doing it. Um, and so, I mean, if, if you look at what we did, I think Reteau's a great example, although it was never a two-lane road. It was as big and as wide as Coloma is right now. We just had one lane each way and you could park on it. But we consciously went in there and put in the, the cycle track and, and squeezed traffic, and we're seeing less speeding, period. Um, so I, yeah, I think I'm at the point where I would say we want to continue to engage the community, we want to probably phase this in, we wanna probably, uh, I wanna say it was either Roseville or the city of Sacramento, I just read a story, no, 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 I think it was Davis, um, that actually put in a temporary, um, uh, surface street change and, 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 and put in temporary striping, a lot of other things, and they, they tested it out for, I don't know, a month or something, they, they just took it out. But I know there, I, I saw a news story on it. And it might take, you know, a handful of, of, you know, attempts at this and, and, and small pilot, you know, s- uh, projects to, to try to figure out how it works the, the right way. I will say that I, I, I read all of the emails about this that I got from the public, but I will say that I tried to re- to reserve judgment until we got here. So I didn't actually look at the specific recommendations on the final slides because I think like David and Linda, I was really excited to hear the po- the possibility of a roundabout. Um, but in hearing the staff's, you know, evaluation of that idea, I get that it's not feasible in front of a school that, that has this kind of pedestrian traffic. Um, you know, if we take, uh, the Zimfendel overpass improvements that we just did, and I know there are a lot of conversations about the efficiencies of moving cars, but what we kept coming back to was, how do we make this safer for people eh, that are walking, that are disabled in wheelchairs, um, and people that are on bikes? And how do we get those people priority, um, priority safety-wise? Um, and, and if that costs, I, I think Darryl said it, um, if that causes some inconvenience for people in cars, I'm, I'm willing to sacrifice that. I am, especially if it means one less person dies or one less person gets injured, or to David's point, one more family feels a little bit safer getting on their bike to ride the American River Parkway, or to Fourth of July, or to school. Um, and right now, they don't. I mean, if I still lived in Sun River and my kids wanted to go down to, um, to Chase, I wouldn't let them ride their bikes that far on that road. Um, although we lived in Sun River, so you probably could just go up to the, to the Parkway from there. Um, so yeah, I mean, eh, eh, where we are today isn't working. And I think for all of the examples that, that were given, I think we've done a lot to try to enfor- to, 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 to increase enforcement. We've done a lot to add additional signal lights. We've done a lot from a striping and, and painting perspective and a lot of other things that you saw on those first slides. And we still are where we are. You know, we spent, I'm, I, millions of dollars at Chase in Coloma in the recent past. We added, somebody even said add granite. We added granite boulders. And those things skipped across the, the, um, the lanes when they got hit by a car going eighty miles an hour and ripped out the, the new, um, fencing that we just put in. So we, we redesigned it, we done, I, I think everything that we thought possible aside from taking steps to reduce the number of lanes. Um, and, and I think it's gonna take some sort of, um, approach to, to that. So I mean, I, I, at this point, two A seems to make the most sense to me. Try to figure out what works best for residents. You know, as we do this and we phase this in, we need to figure out what is that doing to the other surface streets? How much spillage are we having into the other neighborhoods? Um, and then figure out how we need to address it. But I think, you know, we're gonna need to go a little slow, but we wanna get it right. And I think at the end of the day, um, there, there's just, there's no way to leave Coloma the way it is. And for the people that came that spoke, that lived closest to Coloma, I, I will tell you, your comments mean a lot more to me than if somebody who lives in Carmichael tells me it's taking ten more minutes for me to get home. Um, and to be frank with you, their comments don't really resonate with me at all. Um, because inconvenience of being stuck in your car for a little bit longer for the safety for the other twenty-two hours of the day that they're not on that road is much more important to me than the two hours that people are continuing to in and out of the city. That's all I got.
Thank you, Donald. All right, Siri, what do you think?
Siri, your audio's not working.
You're muted.
Or at least I can't hear you. Well, Zoo is not muted for her, but that mic's not working.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, a lot of this has already been covered, and really thank you for all the speakers that came in today and the presentation by staff. I, the key things that I got out of today was we need to slow down, the traffic needs to slow down, and you need to elevate congestion. These are the two key things. These two things don't happen at the same time. Um, you know, you need to elevate congestion during peak hours, and you need to slow down during the other times. Where we are today is not working. That's what Donald said, and I completely agree with that. But we cannot do nothing at this time. Uh, we definitely need more community feedback. We definitely need to go back and see a better solution. The roundabout did excite all of us, but that does not seem to be a feasible solution. My proposal is to go with one and two A as a pilot to see how that works out. That's it.
All right. Can you throw back up the, the, please? The four?
All right, um, so I have an office off of Coloma Road. Um, the traffic there is ridiculous and you can race your way around the city. Um, it was meant as a pass-through road, and now that everyone knows about it due to cell phones, stuff like that, it's now used as a raceway to get through the city and bypass fifty traffic. So we're gonna have to slow it down because it's killing people in my city. That's just it in a nutshell. I don't think adding more cops, I think it will, I think here's how cops work. You put it in there, they'll slow them down for a time, and then it'll just race back up, and then we gotta try to massage the cops back over there. It may be a precursor that we should use as a, as we're getting this stuff built to slow people down, because I'd hate to think that we can't arrange something just for a little bit, because you said yourself, you know, you go there, it slows them down. We may have to, like, press on them for a little bit while we put these measures in place just to protect our citizens, because I think people now, I don't think people are angrier. I just think they know of the backroads because, you know, your phone can tell you where to race through. can tell you where to race through. So I think that may, and, and if we need more money towards our cops to be able to allow you to do this for a time, let's talk. But that might be something we need to put in place until we can get this in place. Um, I love the idea of a roundabout, so I don't want to say it's not recommended. I'd like you to keep looking and, uh, let's do a little bit more research and let's see if there's a way to get one in. Uh, I saw it work on Elk Grove where I used to call it the speedway. Not to say that I was one of those people that raced in Elk Grove, but maybe. Um, but to put that in Rancho would be kind of cool if we could slow traffic down. Um, and we're just going to have to turn, like, I, I don't see us keeping two lanes over there anymore. It's too dangerous. Too many people are hitting seventy-five and eighty and coming at kids, and that's just not acceptable. We're going to have to turn it into something more of, you know, a, a walking path. And yes, it's going to be annoying, but what's going to be taught to people is that's not the road to go to. And so once our navigation figure out that, that that's not the fastest path, because it's all a computer system, the navigation will push people off of fifty or keep them on the freeway a little longer, or tell them to go down to Sunrise and that's the best way, or stay on Folsom Boulevard. Because a lot of people are just going off what their cell phones are saying when they want to get the fastest path. If the fastest path is no longer Coloma Road, which we all know, then it can no longer be there. I don't know if we can do something computer-wise to fake that, but, you know, that's up to you. Um, if I can't have my amazing roundabouts that I know will slow people down, then I like the idea of the traffic with the bi- uh, the concrete stuff. Um, remember we went over to Mexico, uh, not Mexico, but, uh, Texas, and they had that thing where they, they pulled the tree out in the middle of the road and did that thing? That slowed everyone down. I don't know what it is about a big giant oak standing up in the middle of a, a free, uh, road, but it slowed them down. So they would, they, they had the same thing in Texas. They had people flying through. Linda, do you remember that place where, where we, or David, where were we when we saw that?
I didn't go. I, I did, I did not travel with you.
David, which one was it?
I did not travel with you.
Oh.
It's David.
David.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the jurisdiction. I don't, I don't remember if it was Doug Athens's city or if it was the next one over.
It's the one that they had like a billion-dollar budget.
Garland. That was it. It was Garland.
Garland, Texas.
Yeah.
So that, what they did was they did a-
I guess it was Garland.
Yeah, they did like an option three, but they rolled the, the trees out into the middle of the road, and all of a sudden, people saw these big oaks in the middle of their lane and they slowed completely down. It was crazy. But, I mean, maybe not at that aggressive, but I do want-
Garrett, Garrett.
Yes.
Garrett, slow down. So when you rolled the trees out into the middle of the lane, do you mean the trees are movable?
No, I meant like they, you know how they, instead of having-
It's a big tree.
Yeah, it was a big tree, just rolled it along. No, uh, instead of having, um, they did trees, then bike path, then where you would walk. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, the-
Good idea.
The simple description is having a separated, basically bike lane, separated by landscaping, by landscape media.
Yeah, so the, but the tree was the thing that you drove up next to, and somehow that made the, and, and this is studies that you're going to have to bring us. You know, does, what does the best thing to slow people down when going through Coloma? You know, if they sa- see a giant concrete pillar, does that slow them more than just a, a tree, an oak tree sitting on the side? And if it does, you know, I want to protect my people that are riding bikes. We're going to have to turn the road back into what it was originally, which is, uh, two one-lane roads in a middle, so you can make your turns. And then if I make this change, I don't want something that's going to cost someone's life. So, meaning fire truck, you guys getting through, what do, is there a way to be able to protect my citizens so we don't do that? Does that mean my, if we have to, that the fire trucks are going to run along the sidewalk? Is that what happens then at that point if they can't get through because, you know, we've technically put this in place? And, you know, more feedback from my citizens is always good. You know, I'd love to see Beck out there and love to help Champion if I have to, to be out there and, and hear from them. But, you know, that's the kind of thing I'm looking for. I, I mean, I, a thousand percent agree with. I never thought I would agree with slowing down, because when I first thought of the idea, it was crazy to me, because I work on Coloma Road, and I was like, oh my gosh, this is going to make it terrible. But in the end, if I can save someone's life for four or five more minutes of congestion when I'm getting someplace, of course I want to do it for my citizens. And, and I want to teach people and teach the stupid computer that that's not a thoroughfare. That used to be a way for Rancho Cordovians to get from, you know, Folsom Boulevard to Sunrise. It's not supposed to be everybody that gets off fifty, hey, that's a great way to cut over, so you can hop on Sunrise and bypass the traffic. So we have to teach this, the machine, that this is a slow way to go. So if you really want your person, you're going to want to have them go all the way up to Sunrise Boulevard and cut across there. And then, yeah, whatever spillage.
Garrett.
Yes, ma'am.
Garrett.
Yes, ma'am.
So let's, let's take a step back and remember that, um, the whole reason we'll be, we're dealing with this problem is the route that Caltrans designed for Highway Fifty. Any way you look at it, Folsom Boulevard and Coloma Road are historic roads. The Coloma Road went out along the river to Folsom, and Folsom Boulevard, uh, was sort of inland, and it also went to Folsom. But when Highway Fifty came through on a diagonal, the way that, that Caltrans has done for so many jurisdictions, so many little cities in, in, in California, they completely changed the traffic patterns. And that's why we're dealing with this. So it was never intended to be a cut through. It was simply a local road to get people from point A to point B.
Exactly, gentlemen.
So that wasn't me cutting out, that was her.
Yeah. So, all right. Um, so we've given you a lot of stuff to go back and do a lot of research and come back to us with. Um, let's see.
Hey, Albert, could we toll people who don't live in Rancho Cordova? You can drive on long roads.
That may be a challenge to selectively, selectively toll. If we just give everyone, if we give all of the residents passes.
Oh, license plate reader, if they're from Rancho Cordova, you're good. But otherwise-
Like on the Bay Area, like on the Bay Area Bridge, and the Bay Area Bridge. Yeah, if you want to answer, you have to pay toll eleven.
So that was a lot of stuff.
How do we like roll out a barricade at Benita?
Amount of stuff. You're going to have to go back. I, I mean, I feel bad for you guys, because we just kind of like, we're like, everything want to change. So, um, I, I don't know where, I mean, Albert, I apologize. I'm sure we blew that thing completely up, but, um, this is really important to us. But, I mean, Cyrus, if there's a way in the interim to maybe up the policing a little bit, just, you know, if we need to get some emergency money or something like that, maybe even some of the COVID money to help out, to make sure that we have an extra officer there just to slow them down, because, you know, even our cop said that he, he'll slow down, and I understand what it is. You slow it down, the people get used to it, then they know not to go there, then they transfer roads, then they meant they don't see him, they transfer back. So we're just going to have to do the, the dog and pony show with them for a little bit until we can get the permanent fix in there.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, this is far more, more complex than it appears.
Of course.
Taking, taking a look at this, uh, uh, problem that we, we've had in our community for decades now. And frankly, if, uh, if it was easy, would, would have been done by now. So, so there's no easy, simple solution. And I think, you know, it's like staff has mentioned, uh, and thank you, staff, for a great presentation. Uh, there are trade-offs. You know, every one of these solutions may solve a problem, but it could create potentially a different problem. So at some point, a trade-off needs to be identified, and I think a realistic expectation that regardless of the solution that we pick, there would be some other inconveniences and some other problems that may, uh, may appear or may arise. So we will, I think we will have the message very loud and clear. We will continue looking at this. I also understand that it's more important to do this right as doing it in a hasty manner. Uh, I think I understand there is a general discussion or we're doing some, something as an interim measure, so we can test it out, so we can put it out to real test. And we also need to take into consideration, you know, the issues that Dennis Dunn brought up related to the school backup and school traffic is not insignificant. So, so we have to understand, you know, how traffic would flow, so you're not creating more of an issue for the community and for our school children. So, so we will continue looking at this, and we will have staff to, uh, uh, bring back some additional data, and, um, and hopefully we can be in a position to make a call and decision.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, Maria, get up here.
Hey, Albert, while they're, Albert, while figuring that out, I think we do have the, um, the technology deployed that, uh, will put a red light in front of a speeder on Coloma. Like, if you're detected speeding, basically, the, the system says, oh, that car's going too fast, and I'm going to turn the next light red in front of it. I think one speaker tonight referred to that. But we, we do that in some locations, don't we?
Yes, Councilmember Sandra, I appreciate you bringing that up, and you're absolutely correct. The technology that was referenced in city of, city of Folsom, the city of Rancho Cordova, we have implemented that on, along the, the, um, the Coloma Corridor. And essentially what it does is there are lead detection, um, that's set further back away from the signal. And the signal on the through direction rests on red. And if you approach the signal at the speed limit, then by the time you get to the red light, it'll turn green for you. If you're going faster than the speed limit, by the time it detects you and you get to the stop bar, you're going to have to come to a stop. And we have that implemented already on Coloma Road outside of peak hours. Um, the, the times we see most of the speeding is generally outside of peak, and so that's when we have it implemented.
Very cool.
Thank you.
All right. Stacy, can you please switch the subject?
Sure. Um, item number twelve point three on the agenda is a continued discussion of County of Sacramento redistricting.
Right. Maria.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Maria Chikounistad, Communications and Public Affairs Director. This evening, as requested, you'll have an opportunity to further discuss the county redistricting maps and provide some policy direction. As you'll recall, uh, at the last council meeting on November first, you discussed maps two oh one, two oh two, and two oh three, and you requested that staff provide a summary of input to the County Board of Supervisors. So we submitted a letter with your input to the County Board on November second in advance of their meeting on that same day. Since that time, the Board of Supervisors has received your input, gathered additional input from stakeholders, and developed a fourth map based on that input. This evening, the county's consultant, Doug Yocum, with National Demographics Corporation is here to answer your questions, as well as the public's questions about the maps and the redistricts, redistricting process. Please note that the Board of Supervisors will discuss the county redistricting again tomorrow at two PM, and then again on Wednesday at two PM. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Yocum to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Uh, quick correction. Uh, the meeting of the Board of Supervisors is at six o'clock tomorrow, and the following day, Wednesday, they plan on another meeting at two o'clock. Um, I am here to answer any questions that, that you all have about the, the maps. Uh, I'm, I'm wondering if you have seen the fourth, um, draft, because your, your package contains the first three drafts, but not the fourth.
I've seen the fourth from the redistricting website at the county.
Yes.
Um, personally, um, I think it's still in Rancho Cordova's best interest to pursue a variety of, of two oh three. Um, we sent a letter, uh, whatever our last meeting would have been, two weeks ago, saying, you know, it was our goal to be held together as one community. And I think the information that has occurred to us since then, at least to me, is that the math of doing so becomes incredibly difficult. Um, largely because of Elk Grove's population and our population sort of added together, it becomes very difficult to, to draw a district that can encompass both of us. Um, I've also, colleagues sort of come to the realization that, given some of our interests in the region, we might be better served by having two, uh, members of the Board of Supervisors that have parts of Rancho Cordova as opposed to just one. I suppose you could argue we could be highly influential with one, or we could actually have two supervisors who have a stake in us and our surrounding, um, neighborhoods. I know some cases in the South County where they border, uh, multiple supervisory districts are actually benefiting mightily from that, having three supervisors or two supervisors who know their issues because they serve the same, the same area. And Donatoli actually pointed that out to me, so I, I appreciate his counsel on this. I think the trick is to try to figure out how to modify, uh, two oh three, so that it makes some sort of sense in, uh, in, in Rancho Cordova. And it, and it makes the area around us that'll be served by two different supervisors, uh, make sense. So my proposal would be relatively simple. Um, I think two oh three is, is a great base. It preserves a lot of neighborhoods in the region. I think I heard in a public meeting, um, that District Three would prefer to have more of Foothill Farms and have that complete community instead of a division up there. So I would say if you granted them that and moved Foothill Farms into, into District Three, uh, that takes some population out of District Four, but that's okay. They've got an excess, and they can, they can give it up. And then I would propose you draw a line in Rancho Cordova down Sunrise Boulevard. And so the area to the east of Sunrise would be taken out of Three and put into Five, so that sort of compensates for the, the gain in population to Three from Foothill Farms. You can offset that by taking the eastern part of Rancho Cordova and putting that into Five. And then on our, um, our western border, um, there's a portion of La Riviera there that is within the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. That's where the current district line is, that little dash line you can see on two oh three, just around Sunrise Boulevard. I'd propose pulling that back into, uh, District Three. And then you could also consider pulling Mather, as it's labeled on this map, into District Three. You'd have the variable of Gold River going with either Three or Five. I, I don't have a particular preference. I think they're a good neighbor to us, and, uh, it would work, it would work either way. But that's the simplest solution I can come up with that seems to make some coherent sense for Rancho Cordova and sort of preserves our, our surroundings and our good relationship with two supervisors. And I actually think it might be a benefit over a district that would be awfully engineered to accommodate Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove in one, uh, in one district. So I see advantages in this, but I'm open to comments from colleagues about it.
I'll, I'm happy to speak next. Um, I don't support any map that divides Rancho Cordova. We've already, uh, David, and you went through that exercise with the, the mayor's challenge, um, that we already said that we have a divided community in many ways, and to draw a line like you're suggesting, just take all the new area and says they have all of this in common with Elk Grove and not with the rest of their community. And, and, and I'm not saying that you, that you're saying that, but you're drawing that line right where we said we don't want that line for our community. And would it give us nominal, you know, influence in two areas, or do we put ourselves in the driver's seat? I don't, I, I agree with you. I don't think there's a way to keep us in the same district with Elk Grove, and I'm fine with that. Um, and I, I was expect, frankly, I, I've been expecting that for ten years. Um, but I wouldn't want to dilute or divide our influence over a district. Um, we are a city that is large enough to command, um, you know, respect and, and, and influence over a district. And we've been in the same one with Elk Grove for years, where they've had roughly twice the, the population of us. I don't want to continue to be, have our, our constituents and residents continue to be dwarfed by the city to our south. Um, if, if all of Rancho Cordova was in District Three, we would command a very big influence over that seat. Um, and so, no, for me, I, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support, um, or vote for any strategy that, that divvies up the city. That's just me personally.
Linda?
So, um, having, uh, looking at the, um, the general goals that we have talked- the general goals that we have talked about in our, uh, visioning section, sessions, uh, over the last couple of months. Um, and looking at the people who represent us on the various organizations that we would have to, um, present our goals to. And listening to, um, the, uh, information that Donatoli and his staff have presented to us, then I'm gonna agree with David. It is very difficult for me to, eh, eh, set that aside. It is very difficult for me to envision dividing Rancho Cordova. But this is kind of like, uh, the closure exercises that they, the committees all go through for congressional districts or whatever. Um, Rancho Cordova is a very large, uh, very well populated area. And we truly don't have a lot in common with District 4. Um, we do have a lot in common with Elk Grove, but we also do have a lot in common with District 3. And if, if District 3 is completely comprised of unincorporated Sacramento County, that's a huge burden on them. So we could actually do, I, I know this sounds funny, but we can pretty much do the, um, the supervisor in District 3 a kind of a favor by presenting him a chunk of the city, a chunk of city that is very well managed, very well organized, and very well run, which gives him an opportunity to focus on areas of his district which are not as well organized. Um, Sunrise Boulevard is the only logical way in which to divide the city. It gives our more rural area of the city that is, uh, undeveloped at this point an opportunity to stay within the fifth district, um, with people or other jurisdictions that we know and have an affinity for. And, um, and quite frankly, I really don't think we have anything in common at all with the fourth district. Um, I, 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 I really don't. I'm sorry. Um, I support David's idea.
All right. Siri, what do you think?
Yeah, this is a really tough choice, given, um, I'd rather see us stand together and fight for us as a city to be under one district, um, the city as a whole. And that's the proposal we put together. But my understanding is that after going into the last, uh, board meeting, we came out with a conclusion that, that was not the case. And we're trying to come out with a proposal of, okay, if we cannot be as one city under one district, what is our next best option? Um, I, I don't know. I'm, I do think we have some things in common with District 4. There are a lot of things we share. Our school district, for one. Um, well, at least Folsom, there's a lot of things that we do share with, uh, 4. There's other things that we do share with 5, so, um, I don't know. I'm, I, I like us to be one city, uh, under one district.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I neglected two points I should have, I should have made.
All right.
Um, one, we, we have some relatively recent experience where a neighboring community was represented by one supervisor who represented none of us, but had a great deal of influence on us because of that boundary. Um, but could not really be swayed to, to view a situation our way simply because they didn't have any stake in us. Right? So if you have a neighboring supervisor and there's a land use issue on that border, and they're not willing really to consider your opinion because they don't represent you at all. If we divided ourselves using 203 in the manner I suggested, we would be surrounded by supervisors who had us and the neighboring territory. There would be no painful edge like that. Where supervisor would say, ah, I don't care about your opinion. They, all of our edges, they would have to care because they had substantial populations in our, uh, in our boundaries. The sec, that's one point. Uh, so that's why strategically I think it's better. The second point is, I don't know how often, with the exception I just had of land use, supervisors actually vote and it would impact us in a way that, like, I, I can't even come up with one, that the city would feel split by that line. I don't know when you would have a, a vote that would say, oh, well, District 5 went this way and that divides us as a community. I can't, I can't really come up with one of those. Um, so I'm not sure there's much of a downside. My gut instinct is keep us together. But I think my head is telling me logically, there's a better, there's a better, more beneficial way.
So I, I have a question. I have a question on that, Councilmember David, that if, I mean, again hypothetically, do we carry more weight, don't we carry more weight once we are together as a city versus we have two, uh, supervisors? And then we're just a small piece of the entire district?
I think that's a lot. My argument, Siri, is that, yes, we carry more weight in one seat. And David, I, you and I were sitting in those meetings, we're talking about an entry sign on Sunrise Boulevard where somebody represented Gold River and not the city, and therefore they didn't want the sign in the middle of the street. They wanted it on the ranch upside. Is what it is. In scenario of the map that we're looking at, two, for 203, we wouldn't have that problem. Right? So, and, and, and to be frank, that's the only thing I could point to to say, oh, that's why it'd be better to pull this up and take over, you know, bigger chunks of it. But 203 would have addressed that, right? In the fact that, that the claim was that people in Gold River didn't want them necessarily to be associated with Rancho Cordova. And if you put it in the middle of the street, you're saying that Gold River's in Rancho. That was the argument that they had.
Has anybody heard from Gold River about whether or not they want to go into the third?
I don't know, but Linda, I don't work for them, so I'm, I'm, that's not really who I'm, I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about our residents that are here and the fact that if you look at every one of those other seats, Elk Grove, Folsom, and the City of SAC are in the driver's seat of all of the other seats. And we're literally sitting here entertaining the idea that we don't want to be the ones in the driver's seat of one of these seats. And, and to, to even suggest in any way that we would draw those lines to where newer Southern Rancho didn't stick with Riverside Rancho, I, 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 I can't support that in any way. I mean, we're a city of 80,000 people, so is Folsom. And they're the, they're the anchor of District 4. And then you have Natomas and, you know, the, the northern part of, of the City of SAC. And then you have District 2, which is, uh, again, the City of SAC for the most part. And then you have Elk Grove anchoring one. The fact that we've spent the last 10 years in that same, in the same district with Elk Grove doesn't make a lot of sense, in my opinion. But to sit here and say that there's not a way to draw lines that keeps our city boundaries in, intact. I mean, I sat with a, with, with a redistricting expert over the weekend that said, you could just make Vintage Park bigger and move those lines around for 2 to, to accommodate, making 3 bigger or smaller. So there's plenty of ways to, to, to cut this. And the fact that somebody's sitting there saying that, oh, it's just really tough, it's mean that they, they, they haven't, they, they haven't looked at these maps and said, I'm, I'm willing to move these lines to there. So, I mean, Rancho Marietta wasn't in 5, right? It's been in 4 for the last 10 years. Now it's gonna be back in 5. So they've moved these, these lines around all over the place. So I, I, I'm just saying for me, I, I, I continue to support the letter that we've already submitted and I'm not in support of, of redrafting another one.
I understand your point. However, let's remember that the City of Sacramento has two supervisors, all right? They are much too spread out and elongated to have only one supervisor. So they, they have survived quite well with two supervisors. Any way you look at it, having two proponents as opposed to only one proponent is a good idea. And Donald, I'm, I'm saying this as one of the people who would be on the District 3 line of, David and I are the two who would be on the District 3 line of this proposal, okay?
I'm very aware of that.
So, um, it has nothing to do with the rep, the current or historic representation in District 5. I think I told you all, back in the eighties, Fair Oaks and Folsom were a part of District 5. Then Fair Oaks had to drop out, then they had to drop out Folsom, and then they finally had to go all the way down to Rancho Marietta in order to balance the population. But if you look at it, doing it this way, this gives us an opportunity to, um, remain in this configuration or perhaps another two, or at least another one, um, census cycle because of the growth that's anticipated in our area.
We would, uh, I appreciate Donald, your position, I, I really do. Um, and you just said, you know, the issue I was referring to is Gold River, so it's out there. It was, it was a Gold River, uh, signage issue. But, you know, looking at 203 the way it is, if we had a land use issue with, uh, development of Mather, uh, which is potentially, you know, out there, there's definitely development proposed of Mather. Or in Cordova Hills, which we would view as logically that ought to be part of Rancho Cordova as opposed to an island of development, that would be totally politically separate from us. And it would be a repeat of that Gold River, uh, situation, just with much greater impact. And if you, if you flip it around the other way, we can have the same problem not having influence of 3. That's what leads me to think I want influence with both. But I think we've each stated our, our positions pretty clearly.
Yep.
If any of us are gonna go through LAFCO, we need more than one, um, we need more than one supporter at LAFCO.
Or Regional Transit, or CICOG, or Stewart District.
And I will tell you that at this point in time, LAFCO, for the first time, has, uh, an executive director who is not, has not been an employee of the County of Sacramento or the City of Sacramento. So this is an opportunity for us.
And they still might not accept it, even if we sell, tell them to do it, right?
They've, yeah, there's.
LAFCO, yeah.
We can, the, the County Board of Supervisors have no, there, there's no.
He's talking about the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, oh.
So we could tell them we want this, and they're like, shh, Rancho, shh. That's nice.
Yep.
All right, let's take a vote.
But I, I will say in.
By drawing the, the lines that they're drawing.
Yeah, let's.
In the, in the case of a, of a city versus an unincorporated area, I mean, politically, I would much greater fear the elected officials in a, in an incorporated area than the leadership of an unincorporated area.
Who's?
I mean, politically, the calculation's not, not the same.
Who's District 5? Is that Donald?
Donatoli.
And then District 3 is?
Rich Desmond.
Rich Desmond. All right.
Rich Desmond.
I think we should just take a vote and see if we can count to 3. Do you want to do it with a count to 3, or do you feel like it's not strong enough? We don't have a count to 5? If we can't say yes to 5.
I, I, and I, I'm clearly stating, I am not changing my vote from what we already gave guidance on. So you, you, you all can decide what you want to do. But I think there's 2 for endorsing the different path. I said what I'm saying. I think 2 of you need to weigh.
All right. So let's, let's take a quick vote on David's plan. And then, um, if David plans a yes, we can be done. And if it's not, then we'll, uh, we'll stay with the letter that we already sent out. And if not, we'll redraw another letter and then.
Um, yes. Jared, I think Doug Yocum had his hand up.
Who?
The con, the consultant.
Oh.
The county consultant.
Ah, my bad. Are you on there?
The expert here.
The, the, the line drawer guy.
Hey Doug, go for it.
The line drawer guy. Um, just a quick, uh, question to Dr. Sander. Uh, are you aware of the, uh, testimony we've, the overwhelming testimony we've received from Rancho Marietta regarding their, their desire to stay in 4?
No, we're not.
I, yeah, I heard, I heard some of that. I'm just, uh, I'm really, really surprised by that because their interests are so, so in line with the rest of District 5, you know, in the Jackson Highway corridor. I can't imagine why they'd want to, uh, cut themselves off from that influence within that district. That doesn't make sense to me.
I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, thank you.
To make sure that, that, because then your, your line might look a little funny.
No, actually, it, it strikes me that that supports it because that balances it out. That puts, that puts, uh, Rancho Marietta back into District 4 and takes, um, east of Sunrise and Rancho Cordova into 5 to help balance that out.
I guess someone could propose that, but I, I don't think that makes any sense for Rancho Marietta.
Well, but if.
David, we don't work for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. There, there's no question what, how they feel. I, I just wanted to point that out.
Very interesting.
Awesome. I think we should put Rosemont and Mather part of us so we can be a one Rancho, but that's just me saying it out loud. So let's take a quick vote.
I know.
I, I thought our direction of our last letter was that we wanted as close to our planning area as possible. Has that changed? That, I mean, that, that's what I thought I gave direction to staff. And I'm not changing from that, but you can go ahead and hold a vote.
We appreciate that, Donald, but that we've had a lot of new information go over the bridge since then.
And if you listen to the, the discussion of the County Board of Supervisors, I think that's a nonstarter of an idea, unfortunately.
Let's take a vote.
Still the best option for my, for my constituents.
The city, the, the intersection of Bradshaw, unfortunately, when you talk about closure in districts, the intersection of Bradshaw and Highway 50 is the geographical center of the county. And it's probably the population center of the county also. So Doug and his colleagues have a real problem in figuring out how to balance the population around the ent, entire county.
Call the question. David, would you like to?
We need a motion.
David, would you like to put a motion forward?
Uh, so moved, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
What is the motion?
Motion is to change the, 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 the letter that we sent that we support a line through Rancho Cordova. Is that correct, David? Can you restate, please?
I, I can go through the details again. Um, to forward a proposal to the county that would, uh, make all of, uh, Foothill Farms, which was a matter of main, main contention, I would say, at the Board of Supervisors, part of District 3. That would make Rancho Cordova east of Sunrise part of District 5. That would take La Riviera, at least the eastern port of it, portion of it in the Folsom-Cordova School District, make that part of District 3. Take the Mather area, make that part of District 3. And I think Gold River at that point could go either way between 3 or 5. And the math would, uh, the math would work.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati?
This one's tough. Um, my head says to go with one, my heart says to go with another, so, um, no.
Vice Mayor Terry?
No.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yep. All right, moving on. So, so you're gonna change the letter?
Yeah, um, I, I want to be sure, um, we have, um.
Can, can you just announce the, the results, Stacy, please?
Sure. Um, we had three yeses, two nos. The yeses were from Councilmember Budge, Councilmember Sander, and Mayor Gatewood. The nos were from Councilmember Pulipati and Vice Mayor Terry.
And I would like any letter going to the county to reflect my vote.
Okay. Um, we, we do have the consultant for the county and also staff member with Sacramento County. Um, is there a need to send a letter or can we, uh, would this suffice? Since they have heard that, the conversation and, um, Mr. No, uh, maybe asking you, Doug, can you convey this to the County Board of Supervisors, or would you prefer to have a letter from us?
Or would you prefer to have a letter from us? Uh, I would, I would be happy to convey it to the county. Uh, just to be clear, uh, you may want to put your, put your thoughts in writing.
Um, Cyrus, I, I really think it's important that we put our thoughts in writing. And, um, um, to be courteous to Donald, we should, we should explain our reasons for changing our, uh, initial letter.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so that there is no question. It's not made on a whim.
Okay, I think, uh, we have the direction we need.
All right. Any future agenda items?
Oh, we have a closed session today.
Public comment?
Future agenda items?
I think we need to just ask the-
Oh, any public comment on this?
We, we do.
So I don't have any-
I think we're already checked.
Yeah, I checked, but I don't think there's any.
I, I don't have any public speaker cards and there's nobody by Zoom, but I just wanted to make sure that we verbalize that.
All right, I have one.
A little later, we've taken that.
I have one, I, of the, uh, future agenda items. I would like to talk about, um, um, so I was talking to our fire, um, Marshall came down and he was having issues with the, the, uh, he would like to pass a measure or have us pass an ordinance to help with, uh, defensible space near the, uh, people's, um, you know, people houses near the parks. And so he said we would have to adopt an ordinance before we were able to do that. So I was hoping to bring that in for, in front of everybody to protect our citizens, um, from the parks and the defensible space by their, um, by their, um, their fences. So I was wondering if I could get three votes.
So Garrett-
Probably something to, that's probably something to work with staff first to decide if that's an ordinance update or enforcement update.
Yeah, so Garrett, um, there have been a variety of changes to the, uh, NFPA, National Fire Protection, uh, codes in the past. Um, when we, when we have added the requirement for sprinklers in larger houses and that kind of thing. And we all know that we've got something like six miles of houses along the parkway. And not too long ago, um, Metro Fire, uh, I, I, I forget the details, I'm sorry, I was involved, but, but, um, they either got a grant for something to do a kind of a, a fire watch along the American River Parkway. So as Donald says, could we please ask them to give us a variety of details? Um, in terms of what they're really requesting? Because it, obviously, if you're living adjacent to a public urban park, you have defensible open space and they might be talking about the parkway. So we need, we really need some more information.
Okay.
Well, and I, I'll just say frankly, the fact that, that a fire marshal came to an elected official to try to get something accomplished and didn't start with our staff is very concerning. So I'd rather that be at the staff level and see a recommendation that our staff thinks needs to be implemented.
Well, a, a, and I can just disagree all day long, but, um, but anyway you look at it, we also have a two by two and we just had a two by two. Um, Garrett, I think you were there.
Mm-hmm.
And they, and they didn't, and they didn't bring it up at that point. So, um, so let's ask them for additional information.
Okay. So can you ask for more information?
Yeah, we could.
And just reach out to the one that went with me to the, um, the FISA and the Park District. That'd be great.
All right, we will follow up to her, what, what, so, put it this-
All right, um, we're gonna go ahead and go to closed session. There we go. Adam, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Adam, please report it out.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this evening the council met in closed session and received updates from and provided direction to its litigation council.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, council.